Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call the Monday, March 10th, 2025 School Board Meeting to order. Item 1A, Public Access to Meetings. This meeting is open for public attendance. You may also watch the meeting remotely via live stream. Agenda item 2A, we have our meeting opening and roll call. Nicole, can you please call roll and verification of quorum?
Ms. Buschman.
Here.
Mr. Robby.
Present.
Mr. Kowalski.
Here.
Mr. Pope.
Here.
Ms. Portson.
Here.
Ms. Ehrler.
Here.
Mr. Shader.
Here.
Mr. Sommers.
Here.
Mr. Leepack.
Here.
We have a form.
Thank you. Agenda item 3A, Pledge. If we could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, moving on to one of our favorite items of the night. We have Agenda item 4A, the Mandana Bliss Award. This award is a symbol of our deep appreciation for the unwavering commitment and the outstanding efforts demonstrated by our school members for educational excellence in the Stevens Point District. It is named in honor of Mandana Hill Bliss, Stevens Point's first schoolteacher and trailblazer, whose exceptional service and dedication continue to inspire us all. This award lends us an opportunity to shine a light on remarkable contributions made to the district by our staff and recognize their exemplary service. I'll hand it off to Cory.
So this month, we have two winners for the Mandana Bliss Award. So at this time, I would like to ask McDill Elementary Student Parent to come forward. Her name is Ellen Sheerick. She is going to present Christine Nieman. And if she could come forward also, we are going to honor her with our first award.
Mrs. Nieman has created a fun school environment for my child that he looks forward to attending daily. She not only is teaching academics but important life skills to my child. She has encouraged him to not only be helpful in the classroom, but also at home by sharing cleaning and asking what he can do to help with his parents and grandparents. Mrs. Nieman has helped my child become more confident, understanding, independent through play and learning in the great environment that she has created in the classroom.
So congratulations, Christine, with this award.
Yes.
And Sheri, if you're in the crowd, could you come forward? We're going to have you take a picture with us in the middle. And then after the picture, we'll have you go around and be congratulated by our board members. Okay, and we have another Mandana Bliss Award winner. I'm going to ask Luke Adsit to come forward. And I'm going to ask John Wallendorf. And we have a student, Raven Kowalski, and her mom Lynn, who's going to come forward and say a few words about Luke.
I'm already crying. I'm sorry. Give me just a second.
Take all the time you need.
So one of the main goals most special needs parents want to reach for their children during their years of education is inclusion, which is that all students are valued, respected, and have equal access to learning opportunities. It's about creating a welcoming environment where students can thrive regardless of their differences. For our family and other families, Mr. Adsit has done that. Starting at PJ Jacobs, he was always very welcoming to Raven and her fellow students. He always greeted them as they came into the classroom, and he was very helpful in adapting however he could so that they could be included in class. When we found out he was going to be our choir teacher at Spash, we were very pleased. Even though Raven can't sing, she loves music, and she will hum and participate as best as she can. He recognizes Raven and her friends' names on their choir class T-shirts, their posters, their programs. He actually invites us along on trips that the class is taking. This award is a very small, small way of saying thank you.
Thank you very much, Lynn. Mr. Adsit, there's a lot of other people that want to recognize you as well. But instead of having them speak to you tonight, we thought it'd be more appropriate if they performed one of the songs that you wrote for them to perform at Spash.
Live your life a little longer. Don't give up a little longer. As if we're to survive, better give it a try. Hold on a little longer. Live your life a little longer. Don't give up a little longer. As if we're to survive, better give it a try. Hold on a little longer. Hold on a little longer.
Congratulations, Luke.
Are you crying?
I did. I teared. Yeah. Well, that is a tough act to follow, but I will follow it. And we will move on to Agenda item 5, Public Comments, 5A. So just a reminder for everyone, public comments on any agenda item will be presented during this time. They should be three minutes in length with discretion by the School Board President. Depending on the length of the agenda or number of speakers who have signed up to speak, we will have Nicole time the public comments. But before we get there, there were two emailed comments that I will read. The first emailed comment is from Jan and Dave Way regarding Agenda item 9A, Lacrosse. "We are hoping you will approve a Spash lacrosse team as a spring sport starting in the 25-26 school year. We encourage you to consider the initiation of this team as a co-op to ensure the success of the program from the start with the opportunity for more experienced players to participate from different schools in the area. We are hoping that you regard the importance of giving opportunity to as many kids as possible to participate in a sport they love and to achieve success in the process as much as we do. With thanks, Dave and Jan Way." The next emailed comment is also regarding Agenda item 9A from Scott Winn. "Point is now the only area to not have a sponsoring school for a WIAA lacrosse team that was a club team prior. All other clubs have a sponsoring school going into season two. This is not for the lack of effort. There will not be any high school team in the area this season hindering the growth of one of the fastest-growing sports. I am asking for board support for a two-year co-op program, which will help grow the sport near and far. Thank you again to the board and administration for taking the time you have." Okay, we will now move on to public comment. We have TJ Phyllis speaking on Agenda item 9A.
Hello, my name is TJ Phyllis. Do I need my address? Okay, 233 Georgia Street North, Stevens Point, Wisconsin, 54481. Thank you for the opportunity to come in and speak with you this evening in regard to the awesome sport of lacrosse. I've been involved with Stevens Point Youth Lacrosse for the past eight years. Along with board member responsibilities, I have coached at every level, 10U through high school. I have coached our current junior student athletes since they were part of our 10U program. Our youth program has participants from Spash or Point, Pacelli, Amherst, Wisconsin Rapids, and Rochelle. In the past, we've had them from further away as well. I know that Mr. Hauser and Mr. Millsnaugh feel that they can support and succeed with Spash alone. What are the student survey results? How accurate can those numbers be? And are you sure that kids that answered interested in playing lacrosse this year won't change their mind next? Because of my history with the sport and the youth, I feel that I have some insight that may be beneficial to the decision-making process of this board. Current Spash students that played last year under Pacelli United Club Team, you have a total of seven. Four juniors, three sophomores. Current freshmen, who were playing 14U last year, was two. Incoming freshmen that played currently for Stevens Point Youth Lacrosse is six. Spash students that have played at some point in Stevens Point Youth Lacrosse and could potentially come back if it is sanctioned is seven. That leaves us at a total of 22 players. Ten players are on the field at a time. A varsity team typically has 24 to 28 students or players, with a JV team adding an additional 15 to 20. Of the 22 players, not a one is a goalie, and that is the hardest position to be able to field a team. That's the hardest position to find anybody that's willing to play. How is this going to create a lasting and effective team? By making this a co-op team, you are automatically gaining 10 to 12 more players, putting us closer to the solid program numbers that we need to succeed. This co-op is a two-year commitment, so why not? After two years, if Spash can go about it on your own, great. Hopefully, the numbers support that. But seeing what I see in the youth, I don't think that you're going to get there. I think co-op is the answer. Current WIAA lacrosse teams, there are a total of 42 teams. We are the only one that is not sanctioned by WIAA. Twenty-three of those teams are currently co-ops. Our conference would be the Bay Valley Conference for lacrosse. Currently has nine teams. Five of those are currently co-ops. And some of these are very, very large schools that in order to make it work, have to be a co-op. I thank you for your time and really wish that you guys would move forward with making this a co-op sport. Thank you.
Thank you, TJ. Yeah, perfect timing. Moving on to our next speaker, we have Wendy Kowalski, also speaking on Agenda item 9A.
Hello, my name is Wendy Kowalski, 5001 Whitetail Drive, Stevens Point. Good evening to the members of the School Board, Superintendent Hirstbrunner, Mr. Hauser, and administrators. My son Noah, who is here tonight with some of his teammates, is a junior at Spash and has been playing lacrosse here in the community since he was nine years old. He is an active kid and one who is pretty much a sporty. He loves all sports, and he is pretty good at most of them. But lacrosse has definitely captured his heart and soul. He truly loves the sport. We are happy to be here discussing this opportunity for him to play next year, his senior year, for a lacrosse team at Spash, especially since we've so much missed it this year. With that said, I do want to advocate for starting the Spash team as a co-op team. I feel this will allow the team to get started with adequate numbers and experienced players at Spash. With the experience, as Spash gets more interest in the sport, these players will be able to mentor the new players. I do think with a concerted effort by Mr. Hauser, we can achieve what we need to by the May 1st deadline this year for next year to be a co-op team. I want you to consider some of the benefits of a co-op team. It'll boost team numbers. By combining players from multiple schools, we can assure there are enough students and students that have experience playing lacrosse to form a competitive team. Competitive teams are more engaging and likely to succeed in recruitment for future years. Shared resources, a co-op model can pool resources. Coaches, practice fields, transportation, which could reduce costs for each of the participating schools and also have greater exposure for fundraising and sponsorships. Enhanced student opportunities, a co-op team expands athletic and extracurricular opportunities for students who otherwise might not have the chance to participate. It opens up a new sport to those not engaged in the traditional spring sports of track and baseball, thus opening up the chance for personal growth and even college scholarships opportunities for those kids. It also fosters community collaboration. A co-op team fosters a sense of community between neighboring schools and builds relationships and teamwork. Our youth program already is a cooperative program, bringing in kids from all over the area to learn lacrosse. Kids learn that just because they are at different schools, it doesn't mean they can't work together towards a goal, something we all could use a little more of in this world. I would like you to note that over 60% of the state's lacrosse teams are currently co-op teams, including larger schools like Appleton East, which has nine other schools involved in their co-op, giving kids in smaller area schools such as Wild Rose and Waupaca a chance to play. I want to sincerely thank each of you for your time and dedication to the school district and for considering the lacrosse proposal and the idea of starting out with a cooperative team approach. Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on to our next Agenda, our next speaker, Chris Scott, also speaking on Agenda item 9A.
Thank you. Chris Scott, 3340 Whiting Avenue, Stevens Point. So I wanted to share just my experience at our last meeting. I'm on the Business Services Committee. And we were the first committee to hear from administration and from the parents that came. Barb was there, Ted was there. And there was a lively discussion. But I want to go back to what happened when I came in. The previous meeting wasn't over yet, so we were all in the entryway. And there were a lot of people there and a lot of positive, passionate, excited people about this. I figured it was this item, and it was. I talked to them a little bit. And I have to tell you, for the number of years I was on the board, 21, I can count probably on five fingers how many times we've had that big of a group, so passionate about giving opportunities to their kids and to our kids. So it was very exciting. We had, I think, a lively discussion. And I didn't know anything about the co-op portion of it, but I asked a lot of questions. I was probably a little tough on our administration because I didn't know. But what happened is we did support it. And then, as has happened over the years, I don't know if it's happened to you guys yet, it may, it may not. But there have been times after a meeting, I'll walk out of the building or I'll get home, and I kind of feel like I missed something. Something just didn't jive right. So I looked at everything again, and I thought about what administration said. And we did support the lacrosse program. But I guess what I thought about, and what kind of jumped out at me at the end, and that's why I was here, is that our administration came forward to promote something within our district, and it's for our kids in our district for the first year. I really appreciate all of the people who came and all the positive things they said about the co-op. I don't know how many of those teams started out as co-op, but we've only had, we haven't even had a year yet. So I am supporting that. And also, our administrators, I know Dave's kids went through our system. And it's amazing what they accomplished through our district. So I'm not against a co-op, but I really feel like the board's responsibility right now, if they are going to go to lacrosse, that they should consider starting out at one year and see what happens, see what those numbers are. They can always build. And I'm not against the co-op. I think they're a wonderful group of people. They did their work, they did their due diligence. But I really hope that you'll realize that the board is supposed to be looking at our kids in our school right now. And I hope you will consider that when you deliberate. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, our last speaker for public comment is Matthew Kowalski, also speaking on Agenda item 9A.
Good evening. Matthew Kowalski, 5001 Whitetail Drive, Stevens Point, Wisconsin. You know, I prepared like six or seven of these things. And all I can tell you is I'm really excited that lacrosse is coming before you all. I've had a kid who's been in lacrosse for now going on nine years. I'm really excited that he'll have the opportunity to play next year. Wish he had the opportunity this year. This has been over two years of us trying to get it to this point. We're the last school district to adopt WIAA lacrosse. What saddens me is that we're not going to take the kids along that we've gotten to know. We're not going to take the families along that we've gotten to know over these last eight to nine years. And I apologize, I'm breaking up a little bit here. They mean a lot to us. They mean a lot to the mentorship that they can bring to the rest of this team. Having 35 to 40 kids from Spash get to learn and know what lacrosse can be is fantastic. I'm so excited for it. And if they don't have some mentors there, there's going to be seven kids who've played before. How many of you know what a midi is? How about a D-pole? I mean, this is not a sport we grew up with. This is not a sport many of us have any idea of what's going on when we see it the first several times. If these kids here at Spash come in and they want to play and they want to continue with this program, they need mentors. We got 15 of them right now. If you go Spash only, we got seven. What kind of pressure are those seven going to have to try to get 30 to 40 other kids up and running? I don't think we need to win, but I'd like to have a competitive team on a consistent basis. Kids have more fun when they do win. That's just the truth. We all do. And even if they can't win every time, if they can put a competitive team out on the field on a consistent basis, it goes a long way to making this a success. I really think if you go the cooperative route, two-year commitment, we have the opportunity to grow this sport where it can stand alone at Spash in the future, where it can be Spash only. And it can be Spash let up until then. And it can mean a lot for these kids now. And it can mean a lot for the kids in the community around us who won't get to play, who won't get to experience the sport. Fastest-growing sport in the U.S., fastest-growing sport in the Midwest. I would just love to see you really consider that cooperative effort. And if it goes the other way, my kid's going to get to play, but he's going to miss his friends. And they're all out there right now, or at least some of them, those that could make it tonight. I'd really just love to see this be an inclusive effort. I think the kids deserve it. Thank you for your time. Thank you for your work.
Thank you. All right, moving on to Agenda item 6A. We have our Student Senate Representative Report with Kylie. Hi Kylie.
Hello. Good evening, School Board members. And I hope you have been enjoying this lovely slice of summer we've gotten to taste. As we are rounding the third quarter, lots has been happening here at Spash. In third quarter, we've had so many things. For clubs and sports, lots has happened. Spash Girls in Palms Dance has qualified and went to state and has done a wonderful job. Spash Boys Hockey were conference champions, went undefeated, and fought a good fight in the first round of playoffs. Boys Swimming won conference champion and also won the WIAA Sectionals and placed third overall. Congratulations. Boys Basketball season has just ended, and they had a good season overall. We made it far in the playoffs, and we're so happy for all the hard work you've put in. Girls Basketball secured the WVC Conference Championships, making them a three-peat champs. Congratulations to Coach McCarville and all the girls. Specific girls who had an outstanding season include sophomore Jada Stoybert, who hit 1,000 career points, and senior Lindsay Wyler, who had 500 rebounds. Fantastic work. Spash Girls Gymnastics has had a great season. They won Sectionals. The team in individuals and individual gymnasts are going to compete in the state WIAA tournament. Great job, girls, and we're so proud of you. As spring is around the corner, many spring sports are about to start. Girls and Boys Track and Field has just started today. Boys Tennis, Girls, Boys Golf, Baseball, Girl Soccer, and Softball all start in two weeks. And I can speak for the majority of us spring sports students. We are so very excited. Clubs at Spash have also been doing very wonderful things. Raise Your Voice Leadership Team represented Spash at the NAMI Wisconsin Action in Madison. These students have learned about the legislative proposals for the state budget to help support 988 crisis serving funding and help expand the school-based mental health services. They also met with representatives to talk about support for mental health services here in schools. Spash Career Center and Technical Education Students compete in the Skills USA, a regional event, and are looking forward to compete in state in April. Congratulations to Shawn Benjamin for taking first place in the Automotive Maintenance and Light Repair. We also have received two boxes of elastic wrap and six boxes of cobain tape for the trauma, out for trauma schools to go bags. Thank you, SPO, for all your donations and all you do. We greatly appreciate it. And lastly, as we speak, the CTSO showcase for competitive events such as FCCLA, HOZA, and FFA are going on right now. Good luck. On the musical front of Spash, walking down that hallway is full of light, talent, and many musical singers. Playhouse has done an outstanding job with their shows, and the last show they had was Beauty and the Beast. Congratulations to many of our students who we just saw singing, who were just in the show. It was wonderful. Last weekend, there was a jazz competition in Shawno, and many of our Spash musicians played and did very well. Orchestra has a concert tomorrow in the Spash Auditorium at 7:30. And two weekends ago, many of our Spash orchestra students, choir, and band attended solo ensemble. Congratulations to all who participated and many of those who were qualified for state. Great work. As March finishes, we are excited and ready for spring break, and juniors are preparing for the ACT. Wish us luck. Overall, Spash has had a very successful and enjoyable third quarter. And it is insane to think that we are only just one quarter of the school year left. We cannot wait. Warm weather is upon us. I hope you have thought this report is enjoyable and informative. Stay safe, enjoy your Monday, and have a great early spring.
Awesome. Thank you, Kylie.
Thank you, Kylie.
Nicely done.
We will move on to Agenda item 6B. We have our Communication Report, Sarah O'Donnell.
Hello, thank you. I've got your communications dashboard for you in your packet. Looking at February Communications Projects, looking first at media coverage and public relations for the month of February, we had five press releases issued, and we're able to pick up coverage from Stevens Point Journal, WPCN, Point Plover Metro Wire, WSAW, and WSAU. We had some really great stories there. Our highlight was definitely our spreading notes with, spreading positivity with notes of hope at the Stevens Point Junior High School. Really cool project that Nora put together there. Looking forward at our social media engagement for the month, we had a slight uptick in both audience for our Facebook and Instagram pages for the district. And looking at those combined, impressions were up 54% month over month, and engagements were up 60% month over month, with our best performing post of the month being what Ms. Haas mentioned. Jada Stoybert had a phenomenal sophomore season and hit her 1,000 points. So our community certainly enjoyed celebrating that with over 26,000 impressions and over 3,500 engagements. So congratulations to Jada and girls basketball. Looking next at website and digital engagement for the month, total traffic was down a little bit month over month, but is up year over year, which tells me that our new website is continuing to perform better than our previous website did. And we saw a jump in our event count a little bit there, almost 2% month over month, which is just folks coming in, maybe downloading something, clicking through to a link. It's engagement within there. So we like to see those event counts continuing to go up. Top three most visited pages, no surprise there, district homepage, the staff portal, and the Spash homepage. Questions that come in mostly tend to be login questions for that staff portal. Some folks are still getting used to that. And then just a few about, you know, I can't find this, or hey, you've got a broken link. We still have some of those out there. Key improvements, we continue to adjust the information as we see fit, and then we're continuing to work on that improved homepage feature and navigation for mobile users. Looking at special projects and campaigns that we worked on during the month, our 4K registration awareness campaign did very well. When we take a look at where incoming traffic was from specifically digital ads that we did across several platforms, we saw those rank as Pages three through seven of our most viewed during February. So we know we brought a good amount of traffic into those 4K pages. We also established a baseline for 4K update signup. One of the trickiest parts we have with 4K communication is we don't know who those families are yet, right? They haven't registered with us. So giving those families an opportunity to kind of sign up early to receive some reminders and updates. We had a good amount of folks sign up. We were close to 200 families signed up for that, so we're hoping to see that continue to grow in the future. And then stories, just sharing stories throughout the month, we had some really nice pieces come through that we got to highlight in video as well. Finally, looking at project deliverables for March, continuing enrollment marketing communications support. It is kind of enrollment season, if you will, when folks who may be looking to move districts, this is the time that they are, are doing open enrollment, doing some of that research, if you will. Delivery of the board, of the school board self-evaluation survey, you should have received that this morning via email. If you did not, please let me know. We'll work on that this month. And then preparation of school climate surveys, which will go out in early April to both our internal and external folks. Then we start to really ramp up for spring. I think, as you all know, we come back from spring break, and it really kind of feels like a mad dash to the finish. So just taking a look at our upcoming spring projects there, and then continuing with just that day-to-day storytelling with those great pieces that come along. And that's it for me, unless there are questions.
I just have a question I haven't answered for a while.
Yeah.
What are we seeing with respect to use of our app, downloading of our app?
I would say we have not seen that increase in some time. So part of that as well, when we look at the transition from Blackboard to Final Site, Final Site is not sure what they are doing with that mobile app. So we've tried to keep it really streamlined. We've tried to keep the basic information on there for folks that are using it. We are not pushing it as much as we have been in the past, just because I'm not sure what that platform is going to look like, if they're going to sunset it, if they're going to try to sell us something else. So for those that are, the usage has not gone down at all, but we haven't really pushed downloads of that, just because I don't, I don't want to really encourage our stakeholders to get on that platform and then have to sunset it and try to get them to switch to something else.
If you could keep us informed.
Yeah, I will, Meg. Thank you.
And then the other comment, I mean, so most of your report tends to be the reach in. I mean, what we're seeing reaching in. I just want to make that a, just a really positive thank you and comment about all the reach outs. I mean, we have seen, in particular this year, like, like daily, I am seeing video about exciting things happening in our schools, and it's just ongoing. And I just think it's, it's one, we talked a lot back in the day about how to share all the positive that happens on a day-to-day basis with our kids and our students, and I just, I just want to recognize that we are, we are doing that. And it's, it's really good content, information, and it's really timely information, and it gets the kids excited, and I think it allows our staff to feel incredibly proud about that communicative, experimental, exciting ways that they're teaching kids.
There are no shortage of positive stories to tell.
Right. So I just, I want to appreciate it, because you're Department of One.
And that's you, sir.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yes, go ahead Ted.
I'm, I'm excited about the 4K awareness program, and I really like what's going on. I'm kind of curious how that compares to what we'd done previously and, and how you feel about it.
Yeah, really good question. We had not thought of the kind of early signup sheet that happened during a brainstorm with Sherry Stancheck, when we kind of went over enrollment ideas for the year. We typically, we have done some advertising in the past just to try to reach those folks and channels where they might be. I think too, what we're finding is as those traditional media channels continue to shrink in our community, it becomes a little more difficult to communicate the way, certainly that I learned how, right? Like I will date myself there. So continually trying to update and think of ways to get people excited and involved earlier in the process, and just to become aware that we do have a 4K program, because I, I do think sometimes we can take for granted, like, we know all of the information, but for 4K families, for kindergarten families, for families that are at those transition points, like that is their first time on the roller coaster, right? So while we feel very comfortable with that information, trying to get that relevant information out to them in a way that they can digest it often for the first time is really important.
Well done.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you Sarah.
Thank you Sarah.
We will move on to Agenda Item 63. We have our Superintendent's Report with Cory.
Thank you Jen. Congratulations to our Ben Franklin Student Council. They won the Spirit of Excellence Award for our region. It was a state-level competition, so congratulations to those students and their advisors. Congratulations to Rose Varga. She is our Spash National Merit finalist, which means she's one of 15,000 high school students that has been recognized nationwide. She scored in the top 1% of people that took the exam. I was going to mention the historic athletic winter season that we've had, that Kylie did a phenomenal job, so I'm not going to rehash that, but I do want to mention that not only did our hockey team do very, very well this season, they were ranked first in the conference and in the state for most of the season, they reached a number 12 ranking nationally in some of the media polls, and our head coach, Matt Polkamp, was named Coach of the Year by the Wisconsin Hockey Coaches Association. So congratulations to Matt and the hockey players. Also want to congratulate Noah and Jason. They were two Special Olympics basketball players who scored first in their division in the Special Olympics Basketball Skills Competition. Congratulations to our FCCLA competitors. They are headed to state in April. Congratulations to a group of educators at Gazelle. They won the 2025 Collaborative Team of the Year Above and Beyond Award. Those educators are Alice Richter, Heidi Glodowski, Michelle Micklish, Lexi Weiner, Angela Jennings, Alyssa Coth, and Renee Brzezinski. So congratulations to those individuals. Few other updates, 4K enrollment is taking place right now. We have 283 people registered for 4K already for next year. Summer school registration will start March 24th, and it will end April 6th. Board evaluation was sent out today. Please make sure you get that completed by March 21st. Spring break is next week. I know a lot of educators and students are looking forward to next week. March is Music in Our Schools Month, and then the school board election is April 1st, so I'd encourage people to get out in, April, yeah, April 1st, so I'd encourage people to get out and vote on April 1st. We have two board meetings in April. April 14th is our regular meeting, and then we have a re, our organizational meeting on April 28th. Couple donations to our schools, we had the Stevens Point Police Department donate $3,000 of Stop the Bleed kits to our buildings, so thank you to the police department for that. And then we had Stevens Point Orthopedics donate several boxes of medical supplies, so thank you to Stevens Point Orthopedics for that. Then we have two of our board members that are attending the WASB Day at the Capitol on Wednesday. G and Ted are going to be going there. We did ask if there was any board member that had items they wanted G and Ted to discuss with our legislators. A couple did come in. Of course, budget and funding for schools is a hot topic, and the other is, are there any ideas of ways in which schools can help to close achievement gaps? So with that, I'm going to turn it over to G.
The Day at the Capitol, if I can describe it, is in the morning, they have a big forum, and they usually have members of either the education committees or the joint finance committee to answer questions. Chris Coulo, the, what would you call him, the legislative liaison for WASB, said that they have questions already made up, and the big push from WASB this year is to, of course, try to increase special ed funding from 33% to 90%. So that's one of the questions that he'll certainly be asking, and we get to sit around and listen to them talk, and I think we can ask a few questions at the end if we want. In the afternoon, we already have appointments with legislators where we go to their office and we meet with them face-to-face. We can re-ask the same questions, which I drew up a couple of questions, and they'll be concerning the same things, as you mentioned, the financing for special ed and the, the achievement gap in Wisconsin, and if there are anything, anything cooking as to what they're going to do about it. But what I didn't know, and I just found out today, is our district actually pokes into two other legislators' districts. I didn't know that. We're going to meet with them too, and this, it'll be the first time I'll met, I'll have met with them. I don't know who they are, so. We already have those appointments made, and we'll see.
Thank you G and Ted for agreeing to go.
It'll be fun.
Hey, thank you. Thanks Cory.
Yes, thanks Jen.
We'll move on to Agenda Item 6D. We have our YMCA partnership overview, and Chris is going to give us that overview.
Sure. And at this point, I would invite Ryan Zieglo, who is the President and CEO of our Stevens Point Area YMCA, along with Stephanie Gross, who is the Director of Childcare at our Stevens Point Area YMCA. They have a brief presentation to share and highlight some of the, I guess, important components of our partnership, but also how they provide supports for our community more broadly. So with that, Ryan, I'll let you take it away.
Yeah, thank you. As Chris said, I'm Ryan. I have the opportunity to serve the Stevens Point YMCA.
I'm Stephanie. I'm the Childcare Director at the YMCA.
Most of the time when you think of the YMCA, you probably think of a gym and a swim. You think of pools, and you think of treadmills, but the Y is so much more than that. We have the opportunity to serve thousands of our friends and neighbors from our community here, and when it comes to the young people, we serve nearly 3,000 individuals between the ages of zero and 18 each and every year. 2,000 of those are members of the YMCA, so they come in on a regular basis, they engage in program, and then another thousand youth in our community have the opportunity to come in and engage in the Y in some other way, shape, or form. When we look at it, our promise to the community is a Y. Really, if you take anything away about thinking of your YMCA here in your community, it's about, we're here to strengthen the foundations of our community. We're a powerful association of men, women, and children of all ages, of all walks of life, that are brought together for that same purpose, to make our community stronger. So if you walk away from here today, hopefully that's one of the things that, that you take with you. Hearing the award recipients today and talk about all-inclusive and the way to engage population, that was a powerful mission moment for the Stevens Point School District, and I'm, I was proud that we were here for that evening, because that's a lot of the same things that we tried to do at the Y, and especially through our partnership that we have with the school. When we do our work and the, the promise we have in our community, we fall into three areas of focus, and those are youth development, healthy living, and social responsibility. Everything we do falls within one of these three areas. If it doesn't, it's probably not our purview, and we'd look for another partner within the community in order to serve through that direction. So Stephanie is going to talk a little bit about our partnership as it relates to our areas of focus.
Sure. So youth development, the mental health of the children we service in our community is on the forefront. All staff are trained in Pirbon Model and Nurtured Heart and are required to implement these emotional supports. These supports allow our youth to be seen and heard in a supportive environment. By providing an opportunity for youth sports during our hours of operations at all sites, our children are able to acquire team-building skills, friendships, and conflict resolution. I'm currently working on a youth mentor support to students for additional needs in the upcoming year. Per licensing, we follow ratio. This allows adequate staff to help with homework and provide classroom support. Healthy living, providing our youth with healthy options to handle stress is a passion of mine. The additional programming the YMCA offers allows children to engage in sports and gymnastics. These opportunities give children an outlet and creates a strong mind. We offer healthy snacks that coincide with the CACFP guidelines, so no children go hungry. These opportunities for physical activities provides a positive outlet where children can feel strong and accomplished. Social responsibility, it is our responsibility to provide quality care to everyone in our community. Licensed programming allows parents the peace of mind to work, attend school, or simply take a moment. All our staff possess the credentials required by the state to hold the position they lead. My team of directors and myself are working together to provide a program enriched with opportunity and growth for children and families we service.
So how do we make this happen? In more specifics of the partnership between the Y and the school district. We have our 4K partnership, so we just heard 4K enrollment and registration is open at this point in time. The YMCA partners in two different locations. We have our YMCA location, and then we also leased space from Good Shepherd Church in Plover to run another 4K section there. So in the Y, we run an AM and a PM, and at Good Shepherd, we do the same. So we have four total sections of 4K in partnership with the district. All told, it's about 80 children through all four of our sites. One of the additions and the extra piece about supporting families at the YMCA location is the wraparound care. We know that in part-time 4K is that parents can't take off in the middle of the day, or transportation may be an issue from that piece, so a great partnership with a community-based organization to allow that wraparound care. So if they're in 4K in the morning, they have a place to be in the afternoon, and if they're in 4K in the afternoon, they have a place to be in the morning. So a great addition and support mechanism in the work that we do. As Stephanie shared, CACFP snacks and lunch about never turning a child away and making sure that no child goes hungry is part of that. And then on top of that, in the 4K partnership, youth recreation. So we are able to leverage our skill sets and our experience in gross motor development needs with youth in our 4K partnership and programming that we have. We also have a integrated co-located program, which are two sections, and this is both AM preschool and then a PM 4K, and this is for our students who have unique needs. And it's about really building up into an inclusive environment and preparing them as they enter into kindergarten to be as successful as they possibly can be. Along with that, a strong partnership with the district, still the snack and lunch portion provided for the 4K. And the neat piece behind this is the relationship between our organizations about the supporting staffing model. So the expertise in staffing from both organizations can really assure that these, these youth are seeing success as they move forward. And then our before and after-school program. So in our before and after-school program, we serve seven elementary schools. Four of them, we serve at the school. So we go to the school with our team in order to provide that, and those are Plover, Whiting, Roosevelt, McDill, and Bannock. And then three of them, we host at the Y, and that's McKinley, Washington, and Madison. With the three at the Y, one of the things that we see as a benefit, just like in the 4K partnership, is the additional value added and additional pieces that we can bring into the program, whether it's from a sports and recreation perspective, an arts engagement perspective. We can add additional pieces into the puzzle in the before and after-school care, and we know kids are in school from early in the morning till the afternoon, and sometimes it And sometimes a change in venue and a change in scenery does them extremely well. So, and as we talked before, we also have a pool, so we can enter in and add aquatic safety and drowning prevention and swim lessons into our programming as well. We're here to support the district when it comes to no school days, so when there's no school, when there's professional development days, or there's the last-minute snow day where parents need that support, the Y is open for your families. So we'll skip through these. Just on a few quick indicators here. If we look at this, this was some data we used for a grant in two thousand and twenty-three as it related to before and after-school care, and in this year, two hundred and six total youth received support of some type of financial support throughout that year. Hundred percent of parents that are there said that that care allows them to continue their education or remain in the workforce. Ten percent of our families are usually pursuing higher ed, ninety percent are in the workforce that we are there, and more than one in three children are able to engage the Y because of support they receive. And again, it comes back to the mission of the Y of never turning anybody away for the inability to pay. So we are greatly appreciative of Stephanie and our partnership with Sherry and the school district on being able to offer just a snippet of some of the partnership programs we offer with the Stevens Point School District.
Thank you. Any questions or comments?
No, just thanks for all your services in the community. I know you guys do a great job. You've done a great job for decades, long before both of you were here.
Definitely a good partner. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I just, I do want to just talk about the, I mean, this is kind of the tip of the iceberg. I mean, you really focused on our younger kiddos, but the support that you provide to kids of all ages, our special athletes, kids who just want to drop in to play basketball or are involved in your swim lessons, swim team, et cetera, with the community. So thank you for, we wouldn't be, we wouldn't be the organization we are without our community partners.
It's probably an unknown secret that shouldn't be so unknown, that we do serve over three thousand kids under the age of eighteen each and every year, and that's a pretty powerful impact on what we can do for the young people here in our community.
Thank you for your partnership.
Thank you very much.
I just wanted to repeat something I said at the Ed Services Meeting, especially during COVID. It was, it wasn't us coming to you to ask for help. You said, what can we do? To us, that meant a lot.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ryan. Thank you, Stephanie.
Okay, moving on, we have our consent agenda, Agenda Item Seven. We have the minutes of the prior school board meeting from February tenth, two thousand and twenty-five, minutes of our prior school board special meeting, February twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-five, the approval of the schedule of monthly bills and employment recommendations. I am looking for a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
Ooh, twice.
I, Dennis?
I'm not in those.
Okay, all right. Motion made by Will, second by Barb. Can we please call roll due to the schedule of monthly bills?
Mr. Lee Paxton?
Yes.
Mr. Summers?
Yes.
Mr. Shager?
Aye.
Ms. Ehrler?
Yes.
Ms. Portson?
Yes.
Mr. Pope?
Yes.
Mr. Kowalski?
Yes.
Mr. Robbie?
Yes.
Ms. Bushman?
Yes. Motion carries. Thank you. We move on to Agenda Item Eight A. We have our Business Service Committee Report with our Chair, Ted Kowalski.
Thank you, Jen. Starting off with Subject Eight B, the ten-year capital improvement plan was revised. This is a normal thing that we go through every year as we look at our finances and see what needs to be done and the different things that are going through. So the ten-year plan is in your packet, and after going through the recommendations, we'd like to make a motion to approve the revised ten-year capital improvement plan as presented.
What was the change?
The changes there are pretty much updated by what's needed. If you look at the chart...
Also, how about I second, so then we can have a discussion?
No one motioned.
No one motioned.
Oh, I thought he moved.
Well, I was looking for a motion.
He said I'm looking for a motion.
Oh, okay.
So who's?
I'll do both. I'll move.
I'll move.
Okay. Motion made by Meg, second by Dennis. Questions?
Okay. What was the change?
The changes are done primarily what moves up to the top of the pile depending on what's necessary. If you look at Table A, you see the years twenty-six, twenty-seven, and twenty-eight. These are the things that we're going to be looking at in the fiscal year that are coming up that are pretty solid. Okay? And so we're looking at doing some different things. In fact, if, in the next motion, we're going to be doing some upgrades. Paint exterior of the building at Bannock, replacing roof sections at Ben Franklin. PA upgrades of, at Ben Franklin and Jefferson and also Madison. And there is the resurfacing of the tennis court at Spash, and so...
The biggest changes, Alex, were the PAs. We've got some pretty antiquated...
Didn't we get grant money for that or not?
No.
I thought we got a...
It was those three schools where we needed the upgrades, so...
I thought we had applied for a safety grant for that or something? Didn't we talk about that?
We had referendum dollars allocated for safety and security.
That's what it was? Okay.
Yep.
I thought there was some kind of money that was set aside.
No, wishful thinking, though. Wouldn't that be nice?
Other questions or comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say nay. Motion carries.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Now that the motion has passed, I'll go on to Subject C, which is action on the ten-year capital improvement plans. Because of the time sensitivity that's involved, we'd like to make another motion that we move ahead immediately without the further need for approval for these actions, because it's time-sensitive for us to get supplies and materials put together for the resurfacing. These projects, some of these projects need to be completed by the end of August, and that would be such as the resurfacing at Spash and the PA system updates. And if we can get this done before the school year begins, it's very timely. The finance, we have the budget. What the motion would say is we would go forward as long as we're under what we approve for the money. And so looking for a motion.
So we are looking for a motion to approve administration securing final quotation, beginning vendor selection, and beginning work on the eight approved fiscal year two thousand and twenty-six ten-year capital improvement plan projects without the need for further approval from the board.
So moved.
Motion made by Will.
Second.
Second by Ted. Questions, comments?
We're getting, we get RFPs for each?
We will. Yep.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will move on to Agenda Item Nine A under Human Resources. We have our wrestling and lacrosse athletic proposal, and for that, I will hand it off to...
I will ask Jeff Millsna, Dave Hauser, and John Volendorf to come forward, please.
All right, so I'm going to take care of, kind of kicking us off. First thing, I want to thank this group and everybody who came tonight. It, like Chris Scott said, it's awesome when we see passion and energy around anything with our educational community. I did want to start out, just kind of letting this group know, one really important thing is, over the course of the past year, Dave has really been tasked by both myself and Chris to create an actual program to outline any time a new sport comes up, and we're going to look at reviewing the viability of that sport. That did not exist in the past, so he has spent a lot of time putting that in place so that we could really look at that process and then creating a survey that was vetted by Cabinet. It was vetted by our Director of Communications to ensure that we're also collecting student data on that. So I really want to celebrate Dave, because I feel like this motion and the work we're doing is the culmination of a whole lot of really hard work that he did to ensure that we have a process to follow. Last year, we were going through the referendum, so we were not in a place to be able to bring anything new to the board. So we are at a place now where we can. With this memo, we did decide to do a presentation, and the reason we selected a presentation is the memo has two specific motions in it. One, we're going to be talking about adding a head wrestling coach for our girls program, which is near and dear to my heart. The other piece of this is going to be have a Spash boys lacrosse team. So we're going to be talking through each of those pieces, and the individual motions will be built into our presentation. So we're going to go ahead and get started with the wrestling component. Oh. So in two thousand and twenty-two, the WIA officially sanctioned the girls' wrestling program as a tournament series. What we've seen is significant growth statewide. It's grown by over four times in just a few years. In fact, nationally, for high school sports, wrestling is the fastest-growing girls' wrestling sport in the nation. Some key WIA milestones for girls' wrestling. This year, the twenty-four, twenty-five year, the girls participated in the first time for a girl, in a girls' specific tournament series. That was down in Madison. And the twenty-five, twenty-six school year, girls' teams must compete against other girls' teams if the school has a recognized team, which we will. And I think that's really important for everybody here to realize, because that means they're going to be traveling even more separately than they are now from our boys' program. In the twenty-six, twenty-seven school year, the WIA is going to implement a girls' team state tournament series. And then from our perspective, our girls' program has been doing extremely well. Last season, we had nine female athletes start the season, and we finished the season with seven. We just wanted to give you guys a little background, and then I'll turn it over to Dave.
Are there any questions so far from the WIA end of it? Basically, what we've been doing the last two years, as our girls' numbers have increased, is supplementing the boys' stipend towards our girls' coaches. Because our girls aren't recognized right now in our conference, at conference events, they basically have to run a separate schedule. So there's only three dates this year that our girls are at the same place as our boys. Typically, they're on Saturdays somewhere else, different from where our varsity is, on a routine schedule week for the girls. So that part is going to slowly change as programs come up. We've asked the conference schools to each take a home event this year. It's more of a league approach because of... I'll just put that over there for right now. It's going to be more of a league approach where we're all taking a date and inviting four or five different other schools to try to bring more girls in the program. Unfortunately, we did not get through the state tournament this year with any girls, but we are, we're right on the door for that. So we're simply asking to give that coach some support. They will run that program as the head coach under the umbrella of the wrestling program. They will logistically work with me on the schedule for events, transportation, so they can run it a little more efficiently.
Did you, are you looking for a motion right now on wrestling, or did you want...
At the end.
At the end.
Right. They gave me the history portion. I don't know if that's because I'm older or what. I also just want to echo Jeff's thought, thanking everybody for their time and the energy and sincerity that they've put into conversations that we've had. When it comes to boys' lacrosse...
Can we ask questions?
Wait, I thought we were doing wrestling first.
You can ask questions about wrestling if you want, or we can get through the whole presentation.
No, I think we... I think we should do wrestling first of all. It's still fresh. Yeah.
All right, so question from Gee.
I would just ask that the position, I mean, try to get a female head coach. I know it's almost impossible, but I would just ask that. I think it works better with, like, locker rooms and things like that. But I also wondered, if we have one coach and they're going to another place, what happens if somebody's injured, somebody has to attend to that? Is there a provision for sending a second person that would help?
So two parts to that question. Gee, this year, we had two young ladies split the stipend that we made for them.
We had...
We had two young ladies, yeah. One was a little bit of a part-time gal, because she was wrestling at the university. So we were fortunate enough to have two young ladies. So obviously, we feel like the connection for the girls would be best with a female. We'll see how the hiring process goes. There are occasions where we are in three different places, yes. Last year, we did send one of the boys' coaches along with the girls' program to help supplement that. As you know, Gee, your wrestling background, some of those bigger boys' events, varsity level will have four, six, eight different mats. That's a lot of corners for coaches to be in. And we still miss some of the corners, because some of the events are all taking place at one time. JV was in a different location than the varsity was for the boys, and girls were down south somewhere. So we do understand there's going to be some logistical concerns of travel, but those are things that we can manage a little bit better with an extra position to when we look at this schedule, say, hey, do we need more help this weekend? There, we might need help there. We'll know the size of the event, and the schools that are there as well will help us gauge how many mats are going to be at the event. We know when the girls go to the Dells, there's going to be a lot of mats. When they go up to Merrill for one of our league round robins, there's going to be two to four mats. We know what's going to be more manageable. And there's nothing that says we couldn't maybe work the stipend and split it in half to get two people involved as well. HR has given us that ability right now to try to hire more people within the framework of the budget they're giving.
Right, I think in the, just, I just need to follow.
No, go ahead. No, no, you got all the time.
I think in the, I think you're cognizant of the fact that we don't want just one person in charge of the team. Somebody else has to be there to be, in case something happens. Even, even say, even a parent or somebody that we know is there to take the kid to the clinic or to attend to a kid that, while the coach is doing something else. But you know that, you're acknowledging that.
We acknowledge that, and we acknowledge we're not perfect when it comes to that. I think Jeff had to sit on a corner this year, because we did have, unfortunately, a young wrestler get injured or required attention immediately, so, but we know that there's some logistical challenges even with just one coach being hired. We hope that our numbers keep going, so I can come back and ask you for more money at some point. If you were mentioning maybe hiring a second, is that a motion you want to put forward?
What's the pay?
Comment and question. First of all, I'm very supportive of forming a girls' wrestling team. I think the boys are getting fed up being beat by girls, so I'm glad that's coming about. I do have some concerns about the numbers, though. We're talking, forming a program and a head coach for seven scholars currently. What's the plan to grow that? What is the likelihood we'll grow those numbers?
Well, last summer, when we had a change of coaches, one of the things I asked of Coach Gus was, this is something that you need to make part of your program. So he's gone out on a lot of outreach to a lot of the girls. They've sent girls down to the junior high promoted. Our camp and clinic last summer, we've had a few females in. I believe Gabby came back, was a former wrestler of ours. So he's really been working hard to get the girls out and get the word out. With that said, he's also running the boys' program as well, so he's kind of doing two things right now. So we talk routinely about how do we keep getting the girls out and how do we keep them coming out? And I feel like once we get a little more direction, a little more identity with the head coach, good head coaches create culture, and they bring kids with them.
So currently, how many weight categories are there in girls' wrestling?
Twelve.
So we're really only forming half a team then?
Which is pretty consistent with the rest of our conference, except for Wausau West. They have thirty girls out.
And I would say, I mean, and please tell me if this is accurate. I know my son wrestles. I mean, there's a lot of young girls in our elementary schools and junior highs. I mean, it's growing year over year, so that should be a feeder pool to the program.
We've seen more girls come up with a little program that come in on Tuesdays and Thursdays.
Yep.
With moms as well.
Yes.
My last question, just to, you know, for the integrity of the program. If we have this program, we get our head coach, and he or she is, you know, highly motivated, and they go out there and try to grow, and we just don't get anywhere, what is the possibility of taking that program away? Do we do that when we don't have participation at any sport or activity, or do we run it with four kids?
I don't think, we haven't been down that path since I've been here, so, I mean, obviously, we talk numbers. We have to report numbers every year to the WIA and what we're doing, so we have to review our own numbers. If I do see some numbers or trends, or, hey, we're stuck, or they're not coming out, things like that, then I simply go to John and say, hey, I think we got to take a look at this. You know, when you talk about low numbers, we do have some of our varsity sports that are conference champions right now that have not had numbers for a very long time, specifically girls' basketball.
But they have enough to form a team, though.
They have enough to form a team, yeah.
Can I just add, with a little wrestling background? I think, Dennis, one of the things that is important is, there's a lot of teams for wrestling at a varsity level for boys that won't run a full roster. That is not an uncommon thing to see at all across the state, because it's not just a number. It's a number at specific weights, right? So you will see holes. The things that's nice is the girls have that ability to compete, and they have some flexibility within a JV team, so it's not quite as locked in at a JV level. You can give some flex in weight classes, so they can compete with each other a little bit different than what you'd see in your traditional high school varsity duels, where you have to make a weight, and then there's no flexing at all.
I agree, and I was also a wrestler, and I know that, you know, good programs, strong programs, we fill up those positions. And wrestling has been around a long time, and it's gone through its highs and lows. It certainly isn't what it used to be when Rapids and Richardson Center and Solid Spring, when those were, you know, strong... And it certainly isn't what it used to be when Rapids and, and Richardson Center and, and Solid Spring, when those were, you know, strong, strong teams. So I, I think it's a great sport and I think that the ladies, young ladies deserve opportunity. I, I want to see that, but I also want to make sure that we are focusing on the fact that it, it has to grow. In order to justify the salary, that program has to grow, just like any other program in our, in our district. So that's the only point I'm making is that, um, I'm, I'm for it. I'm going to vote for it. But if it were, you know, down the road, if, if we weren't being successful in bringing scholars in, young people in. And I think we have to look at like, just like we do in the other, in the other program. I'm for it.
And then I think Mag and G.
So I guess I'll, I'll ask this with this one and then I'm probably going to ask it with the next one, or maybe your answer can be for both. I mean, this program's a new program. I mean, the girls have been wrestling with the boys, but it's a new program. If, if the board chooses to create a lacrosse program, it's going to be a new program. Do we have the ability to write in to the duties of the coach? That, that educational portion of the sport to our junior highs and maybe down into our grade schools. I know we're only talking six thousand one hundred twenty-one dollars. But, but part of this position and part of the lacrosse position will be as one of the members during public comment mentioned, is really educating kids in our district who aren't familiar and haven't even thought about this to maybe become part of the sport. And so for me, if we want to be successful about it, then it would be helpful for us to build a component of responsibility within these positions. To be dedicating some time to provide some education, some showcases, some some youth programming, some, something that, that will help us grow a sport that, um, that isn't familiar. And, and encourage kids to realize it's something that they can jump in and the support will be there to help them do. So I'm just, I'm throwing that out. I mean, this is not a typical coaching position that we're going to be asking. I mean, it's not typical that we're going to be asking of this coach and of our lacrosse coach in terms of the dedication that they're going to have to give. Like a sport that we currently have, that we've got kids who are already playing in it, in third, fourth, fifth, sixth.
And they, and they are in wrestling right now too though.
They, they are.
And I, and I wonder if given, I mean, even just the sixty-one, twenty-one, it's, it's so, it's, it's not, it's not very significant stipend. If there are other avenues we can pursue as a shared responsibility with maybe the FIAE teachers and the different buildings to share. Right, yes, absolutely. Yeah.
Absolutely.
Is that a question?
No. Yeah, I get, well, I guess it's, it's a, it's a thought, but I mean, is that's, I mean, is that something you're visioning? That, I would appreciate that.
So I don't have the job description in front of me, but I believe in our job description, it talks about promoting the programs all the way down through youth, youth year camp. Every time we do a postseason conversation with the coaches, one of the first, one of the questions is what's your camp look like? What's your structure? The best way to get kids out is to get teachers in the hallway that are our coaches. And they're walking the halls and recruiting kids and you've seen that with some of our coaches that are in our buildings. They're the ones that are getting quick connections. They know they can go down, they know they can talk to, they can say, hey, you know, so-and-so down at the junior high, Mr. Kirk Kleske, hey, I'm coming over. Can you organize a meeting, you know, as a A D? I'm coming down. That's the best way we recruit our kids is people in the hallways, teachers in the rooms, things like that. So they can make those personal connections.
G.
One thing I, I just take exception to one thing you said, Meg, is, uh, this is not a unique situation really. For almost every sport, recruitment is like number one. And I'm sure when you interview somebody, uh, it would be like, if you're going to become in this case, a wrestling coach, uh, you better run a kids program. You better be running clinics. You better be at each of the elementary schools building the sport. Otherwise you're not going to coach. As far as the money goes, I don't know anybody who coaches in high school for money. It's just, you know. Actually, it's just like an honorarium to tell you the truth. Uh, but you can ask Mike. I coached with Mike, uh, twenty years at Spash. And you, if you're not doing, if you're not hitting the hallways, hitting the cafeteria, talking to coaches, talking to teachers, talking to kids, running clinics, uh, and, and running kids tournaments and stuff like that. And then you get to go coach your team, you know? And, and every, every sport is like that. So whoever you hire, you know, is going to be the person who says, I want to build this, or you wouldn't hire them. I want to build the program and, and really if there's nine kids in it this year and in, in four years, there's three, that person isn't going to be there anyway. You know, their, their goal is to, and the educational component is not just to win wrestling matches or tournaments. Is to build a positive atmosphere so the, the, the young girls in our school can, uh, can create confidence for themselves. And I'll tell you, in, in all the years I coached, I wrestle and all that, I had a mentor and, uh, he coached here. His, uh, he would tell me, you know, as far as our sport goes, uh, you know, we don't cut kids. We recruit kids. He said, some of our kids need us more than we need them. And I'll tell you, there's many girls walking around there are looking for some friends. And you join this team, you'll have, you'll have fifteen friends rooting for you right away. And that's not just wrestling, that's in all, all our sports. So, uh, I'm, I'm glad you're hiring somebody to, but I, I do have a question. This person will not be answering to the head boys coach. They will be of equal level.
They're going to be their own head coach from their own program on the umbrella of wrestling, boys, girls.
Similar to across country.
Similar in a way, yeah, exactly. You know, there's going to be some communication because you know where our wrestling room status is right now.
Yeah.
Our room is pretty tight, so they're going to work real close together.
Thanks for the information.
Is it moving on to lacrosse? Yep. Lacrosse.
But we, do we have to okay this?
Let's wait until the end.
I think we'll do the motions together.
Okay, as far as boys lacrosse goes, um, historically Spash has offered a lettering club in lacrosse before. It actually started in twenty sixteen. One of our math teachers named Lori Peters, uh, who had two twin boys, uh, helped get that club up and off the ground. Uh, and then when it, when it says in their oversight, demonstrated strong interest. Those years, and I do not have exact numbers on this, but in talking with Lori, she said there was anywhere between forty to forty-three, forty-four Spash students who were part of that. Uh, oversight and management of the club did shift out of Spash several years ago. And then like Jeff had mentioned earlier, uh, in the spring of twenty twenty-three, uh, some of our parents from the lacrosse community, uh, approached Spash about adding a W I A A sanctioned lacrosse team. Because the W I A A, um, as they added that and as that sport started to grow, uh, had some expectations and some rules regarding, uh, scheduling, club teams and W I A teams. At that time, and again, somebody said this earlier, the reason that that wasn't something on the table was we were in the middle of that referendum process and would have been fiscally irresponsible to try to introduce something before we knew exactly where we were going to be. So that's what got us to this school year where Dave initiated that process. As Jeff referenced before, which included, uh, reaching out to families and a real broad sweeping interest survey. Uh, and then, uh, as on the micro level, sending, uh, interest inquiries out to our students in grades eight through eleven to gauge, try to get a gauge, an initial gauge on what does that interest level look like right now?
So the next thing we kind of wanted to talk about was Dave gave, or, uh, John gave you guys the history of lacrosse. So what we wanted to now look at is from our perspective, the idea of creating opportunities for, for our Spash students. So we kind of bulleted this out. Um, we've talked to board members about this, um, shared some follow-up information. But number one, expanding athletic access. A school-sponsored team allows us to remove fiscal barriers that may limit participation. So we control fees for sports. So if we have a family that says they don't have the money, we figure out a way to be able to let students participate. And we've done that for all of our other sports. Number two, we've got the ability to provide a strong student experience. Players benefit from consistent coaching staff, dedicated facilities and a clear programming structure. Maximizing playing opportunities for Spash students. Uh, co-op would reduce varsity spots and playing time for Spash athletes, right? Our stu-, our students in our school, that is going to be my priority from the very beginning. I want every kid who wants to play lacrosse to get a stick in their hand at Spash. That's my priority. Simplified logistics, um, anytime you run a co-op, you've got to work around travel time for practices. Uh, you've got to coordinate travel time for athletes, having it at your own school singularly located, it makes that easier. Um, builds a sustainable program. Co-op teams often face instability when partner schools drop off. We've talked to Amherst, we called them, we've had a communication with them and they identified one of their concerns was con- conflict they're going to have with number for fall sport or spring sports. They told us that. We have an email with that information. Right? So that is a concern for us. If we have a Spash-based team, we control that long-term success. We work with our coaches, we work with our athletic director, we work together to make sure that happens. The last one strengthens, uh, strengthens school and community pride. Uh, a Spash team fosters a sense of identity, ownership and community among kids and fans. Anytime we have, uh, when our experience with co-op with hockey, we ran into issues where we don't see that same level of involvement with that co-op team as what we see at an event at Spash. The next one was the surveys and John referenced this a little bit. Uh, that family survey, uh, which we discussed at business services was sent out to over two thousand Spash families to gauge interest in lacrosse. We got three hundred responses back. Approximately thirty male students and four female students expressed an interest in participating. Based on that discussion, we made a choice to be able to, we sent out a follow-up survey to our students. That survey was sent out on March third. We got two hundred and fifty-five responses back. It was sent out as John referenced to our eighth through eleventh graders. Uh, what we did, it was a Likert scale. It went from zero, no interest, all the way up to five and five said that you're going to play. Like you're going to play lacrosse next year. We only looked at fours and fives and we have fifty students. Sixteen female, thirty-four male. So that's our student body telling us they want to participate and we have fifty. We got a really strong response from our underclassmen, which was super exciting, uh, which is important to us because we look at that long-term viability of the program. We want to know that we can sustain it. So from our perspective, our survey results clearly support a Spash-only school team, given that this sport has ten boys on the field at any one time. Boys or girls, because we're only offering one fall or spring team. So our girls have equal participation rights with the boys.
So to summarize, John and Jeff, what we're asking for you to approve tonight as a boys lacrosse team for the tournament series next year. The budget was based on budgets for similar sports with similar, similar travel dates, maximum allowed dates, things like that. Plus an initial startup cost to help us get going with helmets, uniforms and things like that. So then the ongoing costs after that, we feel will be lower. Um, again, we only can control so many things as far as travels and officials pay. We don't know what those are going to be every year, but this is pretty consistent, so. Um, and then there's some next steps involved in that after approval of the sport, obviously promotion of the sport, the hiring process. Things that, that we've talked about here with our coach, expectations like that. We would work on obviously a conference affiliation with the Bay Valley Lake Association, which is down in the Fox Valley that Wausau is part of where there are nine-team school and some soft conversations with those athletic directors. They would be open to us joining that conference, um, on a fast track. Now this year, we'd have to wait till a little bit longer because, uh, conference realignment is going on right now for lacrosse. So we would have to wait after the April, I believe, second board meeting before we could ask for a fast track. So a fast track simply works like this. We ask for, to be in your conference. I ask every school, they have to all sign off on it. All right, it's not guaranteed. There are two other independent programs in the state right now. So, but I like what I heard from the Bay Valley as far as conference affiliation. We would be a fifth school in there that is a school-based program.
It would be called boys lacrosse?
That was my question. Because you said that they're boys and girls together, but we're approving a boys lacrosse team.
Because it's a W I, that's the W I sanctioned season that they're in. So it's going to be, it's a, it's during the boy's season.
Similar to like the wrestling, right?
It would be comparable.
It was boys wrestling.
If a school, um, like, like that, let's say they had a boys soccer team but didn't have a girls soccer team, right? And that boys team is a membership school and participated in the state tournament series. Because they don't have a girls team at the school, much like girls used to wrestle, boy, those girls can participate that.
Dennis.
Quick comment and question, but I think it's great that we have such a strong interest in, um, lacrosse, given that it's the oldest sport in North America. It's great that it's still around and it looks like it's getting more popular than ever, as evidenced by the passion of the people before us. As evidenced by the, uh, interest in our, uh, Students Point scholars. Um, one question I have is that of the schools that are represented as possibly joining a co-op, do you know if those schools actually, um, have, have approved it with financial consideration at this point? Had their school district said, yes, we want to be part of that and we're, um, we're committing dollars to it.
Nobody's officially reached out to me to say, Dave, we would love to do this if you do this. We've had soft conversations. Uh, one of the schools that did communicate to me said we would join, but we would offer no financial resources towards the program.
So we have a strong commitment by some parents, some of whom are community members. But as far as school districts, we don't have evidence of, of contractual agreements.
Not at this time.
Alright, thank you.
G.
Uh, can you fill us in on how a co-op, like a co-op needs a sponsor, right? A sponsoring school?
Yeah, and, and G.
Who runs it?
Yeah, so well, Dave's kind of getting prepared to answer that piece of it. Um, I would just share a couple of comments. Speaking from my, my experience as a W I A advisory council member and from someone who sits at the conference table when these things come up. Two really important things to consider is that when, when co-op started, regardless of the sport, it was something that was started for the purpose of sustainability and existence. And you saw it mainly at first in, in a lot of rural areas where they did it simply out of necessity. Because if they didn't, they wouldn't be able to organize a team. So, um, the, some of the other factors that are obvious, obviously issues and things that are important like competitiveness, geographic relationships. Those aren't factors that when the W I A will, you know, decide if they're going to approve a co-op or if our conferences. Those are things that, um, are really discussed as, as, as things that shouldn't be the main, the main reason. And in our situation that, you know, this year, I don't know what number we are right now. Next year, I believe will once again be one of the ten or twelve largest enrollment districts in the state. Our, our enrollment is, is one where when people look at us and when we start talking about these things, we don't generate a lot of support in that context because our size and enrollment merits consideration. And our, it, it comes with immediate program potential. And, and Dave can speak to that co-op process. So there's a May first deadline regardless, whether you want to be a school-based or a co-op in order to be involved in the tournament series at the varsity level. If we were just to be a school-based team, I simply fill out the form on the website and enter on W I website. That's all I need to do. If we were to co-op, there's a co-op process, alright? Just right from their website, school must be same geographical area. Agreement for a cooperative team must specify two school years. Cooperative team applications must include the following with signatures reflecting support of the superintendent and school boards. Approval of all the schools involved, approval of involved school boards, approval of conference. So our conference has its own co-op rules because we are going to be under the bubble of our own conference, even though we'll play in this one. We would still need our conference schools to approve this co-op. Alright, that's one of our bylaws. A co-op has a no-cutting policy. Total enrollment of all schools involved, and a cooperative team will determine classification for WI tournament series. Request for approval to add a cooperative team into WI competition must be reached in the WI office by first spring sport May 1st. So some of the things that you need to also consider is, starting next year with a co-op application, are, right from the WI co-op rulebook, is beginning in the 25, 26 season, a cooperative team is eligible for WI tournament series if it is approved by the co-op committee, the WI co-op committee. The criteria for approval include an assessment of the number of schools in the co-op, the number of districts represented, the number of athletes, total school enrollments, years of existence, and competitive levels. So those are things that go in a co-op. Part of each school's application then will be to give me historical data as much as they can find as to anticipated numbers from the past three years and anticipating the following. I will need to gather that for me at school. And each school will then also need to sign off on and have reviewed the following items. Development of lead-up programs. What do we have? Attempted to create interest in your own program. Have you done a job at your school to try to drum up interest in creating your own sport? Attempt to solve a sixty problems in your own program? Agreed to an application of academic code in the co-op? So we'll deal with, in our hockey co-op, we deal with eight different athletic codes. Alright, so, you know, you can imagine, not all those are ever the same, okay? We realization that incoming athletes may displace some of the schools of our school. So if we co-op with somebody, they're going to displace some of our kids from positions. Liability insurance for each school, coaching salaries, contest expenses. Got to split the bill, right? And one of the schools that we talked to said they would not give us financial support. Transportation expenses, then emergency medical treatment. Which we get our emergency medical treatment, excuse me, currently from Aspiris. We would simply need to rewrite our contract, they would offer that for lacrosse. So those are things we would all have to gather from each school involved. And then you present that then before the WI cooperative as a, obviously, an item for them to review before May 1st.
From what I understood, John, in your comments, the reason for the development of a co-op was primarily for small schools to be able to field a team. And from your follow-up comments, Dave, and Jeff, your survey results, we really don't have that problem as far as fielding a team. And that seems to be the primary reason to be a co-op. Is my understanding that right? And then the extra paperwork involved in doing this is interesting.
By May 1st?
Yes.
Correct, or, it does sound like an arduous process. If we don't get it done by May 1st, we could potentially not even have a school-based program. Is that correct?
Well, our school-based program is just simply, check the box, they send it in. It's real simple.
For the co-op, was it?
Co-op's a little more lengthy. With this timeframe in mind, schools are going to have probably one or two more board meetings before that, so.
The, how many coaches, first of all, would it take to hire two?
We built the budget off of varsity, varsity system, and JV.
So three to start with.
Same as we have for every other varsity sport.
The, what one of the gentlemen said before was that there are currently seven SPAS players on the co-op team. It would seem to me that if we went with our own team, that the co-op team would still exist, and they would be able to, to, to run their program as they have, and they'd have to need, they'd need a new sponsor school to become a WI sport. So we would be doubling, doubling the positions.
Possibly, and again, to be clear, right now, we are not managing what used to be the club. That migrated over to Pacheco several years ago. So what we did was listen to the advocacy and agree that, yeah, adding lacrosse is a good thing for students, and it's something that is, you know, as far as a large school. It's one of only two WI tournament series sports that we don't offer. And this is definitely something that we should explore and consider.
And this is a one-year commit? I'm, to have, how many years are we committing?
For as many years as we can hold it, run a team.
Oh, alright, alright.
From what I understood, a committee, if we wanted to go co-op, we could do that in a year from now, too. If I understood that correctly. If we couldn't field a team for some reason.
Correct. We were in that situation.
Do you have people in mind for coaching right now?
No, not, I mean, there's, gee, sorry, no, I mean, we're trying to get the sport approved first, first steps first. For our kids, and then get it promoted out, you know. Obviously, some quick steps would be, hey, excitement, blow it up, get it on Sarah O'Donnell's social media, post positions, and then, you know, obviously, look for those coaches that are going to do some of the things we need them to do to build it.
Meg, and then Alex, and then Dennis.
So, under WI guidelines, again, and I'm speaking from my memory of basketball, because that's like about what I have from my son. Teams that are, they can only practice during certain periods of the year around their, their seasons, and then potentially some summer stuff. And so I guess, I know that a lot of our sports, we have athletes who are participating in their sport or a couple of their sports of choice kind of year-round. You know, some they're doing under our program, some they're doing under club programs, et cetera. Is that the case with lacrosse currently? I mean, are there, are kids who are like, you know, competitive? Do they have those opportunities to participate in-season with their team, and then out-of-season with other kind of club opportunities in?
You're talking about non-affiliated school activities.
Correct.
So AU programs, sports, things like that.
Yeah.
Kids that can afford it, go do it.
Okay.
Kids that are really talented, sometimes it's really a place where they get recruited. None of my boys got recruited during the season. Because then some like calendars sometimes dictate when that's going to happen. So, but yeah, they chose to play non-affiliated club sports, which is there for everybody or anybody that wants to do it. We have windows of calendars that we have to play with inside during the WI. We also have restricted, currently restricted outside those windows days where we can have contact days, where they can come in and our coaches can work with them. Otherwise, our coaches typically, what you're referring to is offseason things that can be supported by our booster clubs for them to go play in a league, although our coaches cannot coach in that league unless they use it as a contact. So there's, there's a, there's a little fine line, but a little gray area sometimes in that summertime. But non-affiliated school sports would be somebody else's collecting their money, putting up their information, taking care of those kids. Not everybody has the opportunity to do that. That's why education, school-based sports are really important for these kids. Not everybody has that opportunity outside of season.
And I think that was my, my point. I mean, I just know that when, when Jake was playing, we were fortunate. We had the resources. I had the ability to support him traveling to distances, to practices, to et cetera. But I also know that there were a lot of kids that were playing on his SPAS team that their families just didn't have that opportunity. And so I don't know that we know the potential of interest at SPAS, because I think we may have a lot of students that just haven't had the wherewithal to be able to participate in a non-sanctioned school sport where they're being supported, I mean, they're not having to pay, frankly.
In reality, Meg, with, you know, almost, this is a very general comment, with almost every sport, maybe with the exception of football, students, student athletes, especially if they have the means to do so, are usually playing far more events outside of their school-based season than in their school-based season, because the WI has a very fixed set amount of games. If you're a youth soccer parent or volleyball parent, wrestling.
Year-round.
I guarantee you that those students are competing far more off in a way than they are with the number of sanctioned things. That is, you know, to your point like Dave referenced, that's the, that's one of the best things about school-based athletics, is that it provides that access.
Alex.
So, I, you said hockey right now is a co-op?
Our girls is a hockey co-op.
And I had asked Cory earlier today about open enrollment. We have some students that have opened enrolled to other districts, Amherst for instance. And if one of those students wanted to be in the lacrosse team, but we weren't doing a co-op, could they play lacrosse here next year?
I can't speak on those schools. I would ask those parents to ask their AD about the WI transfer rules and how they fit into them. I say that openly that I'm giving you basically recruiting pitch here, which is not allowed. They would need to speak with their specific ADs about where they fit in a transfer to another member school if that's something.
Because right now, it's a year from the time of transfer, correct?
365.
365 days, so if they transferred right now hypothetically, you could, if they said, we're not going to be.
Conversation they should have.
There'd be a conversation that'd have to happen.
Just want to clarify one thing, Alex. Depending on what grade you're in, changes that.
Yeah.
So again, please work with your school if that's something you're considering. To answer your question, John, we have lacrosse tonight, you say, you know what, I'm coming to play tomorrow. Your 365 is when you're eligible for, it's called unrestricted, otherwise you're not in varsity.
Okay.
Even if you live in the district?
If you do not attend our school currently right now and you're a grade 10th or higher, if you transfer without a geographical move or undue circumstances, you are 365 days of non-varcity. Without getting into a lot of logistics.
Yeah, similar to like privates that want to transfer here in the district.
Would it, but if you live here?
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
It doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
Really, really?
Well, because that makes sense, because they're sending their, the school gets that money, so it makes sense.
It follows the.
The year. That makes sense.
Let's see, work with your local.
Okay, so Dennis?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Just had a little thought about how far we've come as, in, in sports and, in high schools and beyond, I guess. But when Meg started talking, I thought she was going to talk about her basketball career. And I was going to remind her that when she was playing basketball, ladies could not go over half-court. So that's become a long way since that time.
Is that a dig or?
No, it's just how far we've gone, it's true, that is true.
That's true.
Actually, I was a freshman in high school.
Do you want the minutes to reflect that?
I do, absolutely.
I was a freshman in high school when Title IX just began, and so I was the first class that was able to participate in girls' sports in high school. That was 1972.
Before us to this evening on the agenda, it really is a matter of whether or not we are going to approve a lacrosse, you know, high school sport. And I will definitely support that, that we will have lacrosse as a high school sport for the Stevens Point area school district. I have feelings, great empathy for the passion of our parents and both within our community and outside school districts who are advocating for our co-op. I have experience in small school districts with co-ops, and what they're trying to accomplish is 100% rational and reasonable. And I believe they will have a co-op. I just don't believe that SPAS is an appropriate anchor school, given the fact that your numbers and your advocacy indicates we had at one time enough interest at SPAS to field a team. And it seems like we will have interest in the future. And in terms of our programming, it seems like that makes sense, that we have a program. I don't need to be nasty about, but we're not in need of a co-op. You have a co-op if you can't sustain or develop a program. And I've been involved in a number of districts where we had to have co-ops for wrestling, for soccer, hockey, and those are appropriate and they're available. And given the passion that I've seen and read about over the last week and a half, two weeks, I have no doubt that they'll be able to form a co-op team someplace, somewhere. So thank you.
Barb?
Well, at committee last week, I spoke pretty strongly in favor of a co-op, because I, I'm a mom, I'm a grandma, I want to see the kids play, you know. We all would move heaven and earth to get our child involved in something that they loved. However, I think we'd be fiscally irresponsible if we form a co-op right now, not knowing if the other schools are going to have some money for us. I mean, that, that is a step that would have needed to be done. We'd have to have an agreement that we're going to get some support financially.
So, just ensure I'm tracking. So we, there's 10 to field a team, correct? And we have seven SPAS players, and we have 50 interested students. And so, I mean, like you, Barb, like I value partnerships, and there's nothing better I like to see than parents that advocate passionately for their students. But I, I agree with you. I think that a school-based program would ensure that our funds remain dedicated to our students. And our job here as school board members are first to prioritize the students within our district. So I'm in agreement with you on that.
So there are two separate motions for you tonight. One, to add a girls' wrestling head coach stipend. And then the second is the addition of a SPAS boys' school-sponsored lacrosse team. And so we are looking for a motion to approve the addition of a girls' wrestling head coach stipend to the appendix B schedule, starting with the 25, 26 school year, approximately $6,121 as presented. Motion made by G. Second by? Dennis? Questions, comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay. Okay, motion carries. We are looking for a motion to approve the addition of a SPAS boys' lacrosse team as a WIAA sanctioned team, beginning with the 25, 26 school year as presented.
So motioned.
Motion made by Ted, second by G. Questions, comments? Okay, all in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Motion carries. Okay, so then we will move on to our next agenda item, which is educational services. Thank you, gentlemen. 10A with our chair, G Po.
Okay, we had three things on the docket at our Ed Services meeting. One was YMCA presentation, which they did again here for us today. One was an OLC presentation from Dana Glodowski. And just, just a couple of things she said that I thought were important. She said they've served over 4,900 students, and since 2011, grades seven through 12. And that 90 to 95% of the teachers in the OLC program are, are teachers. Which I thought was incredible. The success rate of kids was the same as kids taking in-person courses. And we didn't do the truancy update, did we? We skipped that.
April.
Yeah, but. What? Chris is here to fill us in on the mid-year data update, and he has some stuff up here for us.
So I would like to lead in, and this is an annual agenda item that we've been bringing back. We usually begin the year by sharing our baseline data in the fall. This is an update on the universal screening assessments that we administer to all of our kindergarten through 10th grade students, both in the area of reading and mathematics. So what we're highlighting here, in the first two slides, is the amount of growth that students have experienced from fall of 2024 until just this January, when they completed the mid-year assessments. I did provide just this context, how that compares to how students performed in the fall of 2023 and the winter of 2024. I do want to point out here that this is not exactly an apples-to-apples comparison at elementary, because it is a different assessment. So those two columns on the far right are fast-paced screening assessments for reading and math. And the two on the left-hand side are the current assessments that were required to administer to elementary students as part of Wisconsin Act 20. So those are aims one plus. You'll notice when Jeff goes through his slides, he provides a year-to-year comparison in terms of how those. You'll notice when Jeff goes through his slides, he provides a year-to-year comparison in terms of how those cohorts are performing, in terms of whether or not we're seeing growth overall from year to year. That wasn't relevant data here because it's not looking at the same assessments. I just wanted to note that. Really proud here to report, this is the first time I've been able to stand in front of this board and report out that at elementary, we've had, we've had growth at every single grade level.
That's amazing.
With the exception of third grade, where we saw a flat level of performance. I wanna point out here that though this is a lot to celebrate, I'm really encouraged by the fact that teachers and principals look at this data at mid-year. And yes, we're really proud of the work that's happening in our classrooms and the, the progress kids are making. I want to also point out though, that when we talk about meeting grade level expectations or meeting benchmark, we're talking about having students score at the forty-fifth percentile. So though we celebrate growth at every grade level, it's what we expect to see, right? And we expect to see percentages of kids around eighty or ninety reading that, meeting that minimum level of performance, which is the forty-fifth percentile. So yes, we're very happy, we're very pleased to report this out, but we recognize there's more work to do. In math, we have traditionally performed better. I'll wrap this up a little bit in the last slide that I shared. You know, we can hypothesize that we have a standards-aligned curriculum resource available for students. And we have for the last several years in the area of math. We do not have that in ELA. So our ELA levels of performance have lagged slightly. You know, the adoption of our CKLA resource that we'll, we'll implement in the fall will certainly help, or we hope will help change what those results look like.
Before you go too far, on that first Ames Web reading one? How many of our kids are we seeing needing interventions now with Act Twenty stuff? Looking at these numbers, in first grade, you know, at twenty-seven percent needing, that's, how, what type of intervention numbers are we looking at right now?
So we're still looking at approximately, if you think about, we have still just shy of a thousand kids who require a personalized reading plan. Which means we have about that many kids across our K-three grade levels that are still scoring below the twenty-fifth percentile. So in the spirit of, there's still work to do, there is still work that needs to be done. I am proud to say that, you know, as a first year being required to write those PRPs, we had most of those completed and reported out to families before the end of January. And those, those intervention plans were being implemented, in many cases within weeks or one week of those assessments being completed. So we hope to see that, you know, those, those personalized reading plans are providing the level of support and intervention that students need. But it is still a large number of PRPs that exist.
And we're supporting our teachers in that because it's a boatload of work.
Boatload, and that means a lot.
Boat, yeah. It's a yacht worth, okay? It's a Noah's Ark worth. And so I'm just concerned making sure that our teachers have that support. And Corey has assured me that they do, but I know because I participated in them, they're so intensive. And the amount of testing that these poor kids have to go through, every what, week, every two weeks, something like that? And it's absurd, absurd amounts. And I just wanna make sure that our teachers are being supported in that because it's so much work.
It's time-consuming. We were fortunate in our district because of the six additional professional learning days that we have for elementary. All students that required a PRP to be developed for them, we took an entire professional learning day in the afternoon and we brought grade level teams together. So all kindergarten teachers, all first grade, all second grade, all third grade, they came together with reading interventionists, with ELL teachers, with special education teachers, principals. And they completed the PRPs that needed to be rewritten for students at their buildings. So that was part of the PD that we provided. So it wasn't something they were expected to do outside of the regular workday or on their own.
Okay.
Were we doing, are we doing something different now? I mean, the numbers, the numbers of kindergarten, at kindergarten, they're just stark for me compared to first grade. So, so I guess I'm asking, I mean, clearly, some of it, you know, I know different cohorts of students are at different levels, but I'm just wondering, you know, that's, I mean, not where we want it to be, but-
Right, better.
Better.
Yes, yep. And I think some of this truly is, and I'll, I'll credit this board and I'll credit, you know, your interest in wanting to better understand this data and what it looks like. I think we have created a culture where people are now aware. And I think absent these conversations and discussions on a broader scale, we weren't really aware that kindergartners were underperforming. And we were, it became comfortable for us to be able to say, they'll get there. They're not developmentally ready for that. And I think what we've identified is they are capable and they are ready. And I think our kindergarten teachers have really stepped to the plate in terms of providing that additional level of rigor that they now realize kids are capable of achieving.
And the integration of more phonics.
And the awareness.
Huge.
Yeah.
Both the awareness and-
Yes. And what's the sentiment of our, of our teachers? I mean, this is a lot of data. To Alex's point, we're asking them, I mean, we've added more rigor, expectations, what's the sentiment?
I think folks are feeling really proud of the growth that they've made. You know, I think collectively, they have really taken this as a challenge. They know that it can be better. They know that where we are and where we were was not good enough. I think we've really built a palette for, we've really developed a palette for implementing this new resource. Because we balanced that with a foundational literacy skills learning that they needed to do through letters. And now that they realize if this is what I'm being asked to do with kids at my grade level, I now need a resource that allows me to be able to do it effectively. So I think we've intentionally laid that plan out in a way that's making folks feel really good and really excited.
Awesome, good to hear.
Sorry for-
For the Noah's Ark comment?
Secondary.
Don't talk about Santa Claus.
So as Chris mentioned, ours does look a little bit different at secondary. I do wanna kinda highlight how I've got it laid out. You'll see the grade levels in the first column. You'll notice that there's numbers going down there. I wish I could report the same thing Chris has, but unfortunately I can't. And I always promised anytime I talk about data and, and I think that's one area where Chris and I have been really consistent. Our principals have already had conversations with this. We, we, we know we're gonna continue to work to do better. I will tell this group that historically, what you're seeing up there isn't all that different than what we've seen year over year. We don't see at our secondary level growth from winter, from fall to winter. We see a drop, seventh and eighth grade, that's almost identical to what we saw last year. Nine and ten, that is a little bit higher. And that's something that we're working on with our, both our reading teachers at the secondary level and our ELA teachers. The next two columns that you guys will see, those are our fall and winter scores for this current year. You'll also notice that I have the fall and winter scores for two thousand twenty-three. One thing I wanna note, that is a little bit different than what you saw on Chris. You see a whole bunch of green then in two columns. And what that is, is that's a comparison of what did we see last year? So when we look at our seventh graders last year, their scores were seven percent lower than that fifty-five percent for fall. They were seven, six percent lower than that fifty-four percent. So what we're seeing is we're seeing a step up. If you wanted to compare cohort data, you could simply take fall of two thousand twenty-three for seventh grade and winter of two thousand twenty-three and slide that up to eighth grade. When you look at that comparison, we're higher in every area but one. So while we're, cuz I'm really competitive, you know that about me, and, and I have to-
I'm winning, just so you know. I'm winning, just so you know.
Yes.
This is the context.
But what we're really focused on is, we wanna, we wanna help our kids find a way to see some success and value in this test. Where we're knowing we're having our students struggle is these students that year over year, this is just, it's like a hit. I struggle and I struggle and I, and we keep taking this and they're, we want them to understand that. So what we're really trying to do is help our teachers figure out a way to integrate that into classroom discussions. It helps students understand and celebrate small steps, right? And, and that's what we're really, really working hard with, with our teachers on. And yes, it is really warm in here.
I mean-
Next one is our A-math data, same structure. This is a huge celebration for us cuz you'll notice on the left side we see C. Eighth and ninth grade are up one percent in each of those when we compare our fall to our winter, which is a huge celebration. And then when we compare fall to winter data there, you'll see, we see, see growth in every one of our areas or flat, except that winter tenth grade group. And I will tell you that, that is a really tough test for those kids to take. They've done this for a long time. And when we do cohort comparisons, we're the same or better in all but one area. So that was our, any questions with A-reading or A-math at the secondary level?
And comparing these to our scores, looking at the ACT or something, how would, can we compare or draw any type of likeness to sixty-one percent is approximately seventeen? Or anything like that? So that we have some kind of tangibility to this rather than a score being there?
When we've talked to Fastbridge, they would say it's somewhat correlates. That was the language I was given from them.
Correlation rate is quite low, is what they will say.
So then why are we?
In, in the elementary test, there was a different test, right?
Correct.
Is the same true here?
Nope.
This is the same, this is apples to apples.
This is apples to apples.
Next year, secondary will be shifting over to Ames Web. So next year, we will be the same again, all the way from kindergarten all the way up to tenth grade.
Is there any correlation to forward testing?
So the correlation rate between Ames Web Plus and Forward is higher than it was at Fastbridge. And I think, you know, Alex, to your point, like what's the point, right? I think we have to also remember, the purpose of the universal screener is really intended to just identify kids who are in need of additional support or might benefit from enrichment or enhancement opportunities. So it is difficult to say that this is a predictor of performance on some of the assessments like pre-ACT, ACT, or Forward. And that's why the correlation rate is low and that's why I think just generally we've become more accepting of that. The purpose of the assessments are different. But this data does allow us to keep at least a pulse on how our cohorts of students are performing year to year and from testing interval to testing interval.
I just feel like there should be some sort of correlation because testing for testing sake is killing our kids.
I want it to be higher too.
Are, are we, I don't know. I mean, describe for me, cuz I don't know. Describe for me a, a normal testing day. I mean, are the kids showing up? I mean, or, or the two days before, beforehand? I mean, how are we working to create?
Like ACT testing or?
No, I think she's talking about these, so there's a communication that goes out to parents.
Right, so for me, I guess from, from the perspective of our staff, I mean, I know, I was just out in Colorado and my second grade son has testing this week and he was talking about all the, all the like excitement they were already doing with their second graders this past week about, like, the tests are coming and this is really good and this is really exciting. And they like make like a big deal out of it, that it's like a really good, good thing. And I just, I guess I'm just wondering, have we looked at changing kind of the environment at all to see the time it's taken, the whatever? I don't know.
And I think, Meg, we can probably circle back to your question. It's a bullet on our very last slide.
Okay, thank you.
To talk about what are we doing as a next step to continue to enhance those performance.
Thank you.
This is one, this came as a request from the board, this outlines when we look at our IM courses, what are our math course grades in seven through ten? So from top to bottom, you'll see we start in seventh grade, which is our transitional math, advanced transitional math. And working across, you see F percentages, D percentages, and then I reported out combination. One of the things that I really wanna highlight to this group, and I did the same thing at Ed Services, is pre-algebra. That number jumped out to me and it jumps out to just about everybody. I really need this group to understand there, what you're looking at and seeing is the effect of what happens when you accelerate students in math. So you're taking one quarter of that, that class, the top one quarter, basically every single kid who's gonna get an A, they don't take pre-algebra. So that top one quarter, if you were to break it down by percent, is not part of that cuz they don't take that course. Now, I, I did listen, Meg, when you shared yours. I've reached out to the ILs and we started a conversation around, that's still not good enough for us, what can we do better? How can we continue to support kids when our target supports at the junior high? How can we make sure we're communicating with parents? Because that's one of the barriers, Meg, you brought up that we talked about. And that's a really hard one, but we're trying to see what other things we might be able to do. Can we message out better the grade resources that are built within IM and help our parents figure out how to navigate that resource? They're there, it's that navigation piece, getting parents comfortable. We're trying to figure that out. So I've talked to that group already. The other two that I do wanna highlight for this group are, there's a, a row going across that says junior high, semester one, D-F percentages. What I did was I wanted to be able to report out, when we look at our junior highs, what do we see? So you'll see on the top for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, we're at twenty-three point nine percent. Last year, we were at twenty-two. So we saw a slight bump up of one point nine percent. Actually ran the math, that's twenty-eight students between the two junior high schools. So it is going up, it's something we're watching. I talk to the principals about this regularly, but I don't see a huge spike. I really wanna see the other piece of it, or celebrate the other end of it too, is SPAS. We had a lot of conversations around this last year. Our, our DNF data up there was extremely concerning. Last year, we were at thirty-two point eight percent when we looked at our geometry and our L-G two students. This year, we're at seventeen point six. And that's not teachers making it easier, it's the same curriculum. They're getting better at the curriculum, they're working really hard. They're working harder to support our students during core lab, during PLT time. And they've worked really hard with administration to make sure we are doing best practices with assessments and math classes. Spreading them out, using our formatives to inform us so we can support students before we hit a summer.
What slides?
I'm, I'm just gonna once again reiterate something I said at, at Services. Looking at L-G two and SPAS semester, like, that's one in five kids have a D or F, looking at SPAS semester one. And L-G two, that's one in three kids have a D or F. A little less than one in three kids has a D or F. Those are still unacceptable numbers. Completely unacceptable numbers. So there's something wrong. I'm not saying that we need to decrease rigor, no, no. But we need to find some kind of supports cuz one out of three is unacceptable.
And I think to your point, and I think it was Meg's suggestion, I do agree. So parents do get any, we get certified ma, or not certified, we get mail that says, you know, your student receipt is currently in a D or an F. That's all it says. It doesn't say, and here's who you can contact, and here's what supports we have, and here's what we recommend. And I don't know how we get there, but we, I think we need to find a way, right? Because what do they do with that information?
And we just approved, at our last principal meeting, we made a draft communication for the next conference where we have a formula that's going out to every parent for Ds and Fs, inviting them in.
And that is a good, yeah.
That's, that's a step we have done and that's a step the principals got on board with. So we, we've approved that as a group and we made sure that a very similar communication is going out to Ben Franklin, CJ Jacobs, and SPAS for us.
And for the board members that might not be aware, so that means that we are prioritizing parents and students that have Ds and Fs in those conferences so that they don't have to stand in line and wait. Like we are prioritizing and they are scheduling time for them.
How do you invite them in at, you make an appointment, is that what you do?
Yeah.
Yes.
Oh.
Yep, so they've got it set up, each teacher, each kid is able to coordinate that. So a personal email goes out from that teacher to the parent, asking them to please come in. They ask them what time work for you and they ask them what mode would you rather have? Do you want virtual, do you want face-to-face, do you want a phone call? Parent emails are back, the teacher creates a calendar invite, and we have our follow-on.
And we've not done that before. So this is definitely an enhancement and a way to engage parents in ways we haven't done.
I, I know we're finding some interest from parents in some of these kind of focused, let's get together and talk about how we can help you and how you can help us. I, I just wonder if it might be helpful for us to be reaching out to parents and having conversations about, you know, this is something that we all need to work on because we all need to make it better. And can we have some listening sessions where parents could come in and talk with us about how, what tools they might need?
Can I do one of those Sam, one of Sam's listening sessions?
Yeah, what, you know, what tools, what tools could we provide them or, or what do they think would be helpful?
In navigating?
In navigating and in supporting their kids. Because, you know, as I said, I mean, I think there are just a lot of parents that hit that pre-algebra level and they just feel like they don't know how to help.
And I think this part of, you know, like certainly we, we improve systems, right, by creating awareness. And as part of program review tonight, I'm gonna share some preliminary takeaways from the math sequencing course study that we're having done and ELA course sequencing study. ELA data's not complete yet and nor is math, but I was able to pull out a couple pieces and I think it identifies based on like analysis of six-year- based on like, analysis of six year, six years of performance, just some systemic shortcomings. And some of this is exactly what it's revealing, right? Number of kids that take Algebra I that have to take, retake Algebra II, that percentage is high. If we look at just socio-economically disadvantaged students, the percentage is even higher. So, I'll put a pin in this if I could, and just, how do you keep this conversation in mind when we look at some of those preliminary takeaways from that handover study?
Put a pin in it?
Yeah.
Sorry.
Oh, no, don't.
Gee.
You know, with talking about parents helping when they get to pre-algebra, the, the old refrain is, I can't do this math now today.
I did math.
But, but they don't, but they don't have to do that. They, you know, and you know that, the things that we can give them are not, how to do algebra is, what can you do for your students to help them get better? Study dates, dedicated time, space, and stuff like that, that they may not think of, you know? They don't have to do the math, their, their kids do.
Right.
Yeah, this is a friendly comment, even though it doesn't, may not sound friendly.
If you have to profess with it being friendly, I mean.
It's very, very friendly.
That's a right, it's probably not.
It's shocking that one out of three students in Stevens Point, Wisconsin, you know, we, we have a community that is pretty above average, and yet, one out of three is, I, I don't believe it's the teachers. You know, I know we have great teachers, it probably isn't the curriculum, but there's, you know, I'm not sure, I, I guess I'd be questioning what kind of support systems we have, because we're able to identify that we have weaknesses, and what are we, what are we doing regarding that? And I'm not trying to preach here, I'm just saying, that is shocking. And when you indicate that, it's like, wow, you're right, that, that's, that's way wacko.
And I just, and I'll let you go, Will, but one of the things that I want, I do want to highlight, Dennis, is when we look at our Forward data, Alex asked about alignment, that's what you see. That well aligns to what we would see if we looked at our Forward data, and what we would see out of ACT. So that level of rigor, like, that's, it's there. I mean, that's, you know, when we picked IM, we knew what we were getting into it, and that's, that's a piece of it. Is that an excuse? Does that mean, oh, no, we just stopped? Absolutely not.
It just shows that we're consistently wacko in all those tests. So, again, my point is, if we thought it was the teachers, you know, that would be one thing, I, I am convinced it's not. I know that we purchased curriculum, we have great curriculum, so I, I'm wondering what kind of support system we have. And we also know that not all our scholars come in highly motivated in some of these areas. And we know that some of them go through the motions, I mean, that's always happened, but not one out of three. So I, I guess I'm, I, I know that you're concerned about it, I think the board should be concerned about it, and I think we should have some kind of, of a plan from you, in terms of what we're going to do about it substantially, because, you know, it's not enough to say we're going to talk to our teachers in this. We, we have to put something else in, because what's coming out is consistently not where we want to be.
And I think when you say it the way you said it, Alex, right, one in three?
It's, it's a little less than one in three, but.
But it is alarming to hear that, and it is alarming to see those numbers. I think what I can celebrate, and again, I don't want to, you know, I don't want to create all kinds of anticipation for the program and budget evaluation presentation, but there is, because that never happened. There is some data there, I think, to indicate a shift in what we're seeing, and some of it is around the culture that we build, right? This idea that you can do difficult math, and you are capable, and we believe you can do it, and we believe you can be successful. And I think in the last two years, and in our most current year, in terms of enrollment for the upcoming year, we have interrupted the pattern, and we have seen more students enrolling in college level and advanced level course pathways. And it comes as a result of these conversations. This is the work that prompts that change, and you all are a part of that. And I think you all, we don't often pause long enough to pat board members on the back, but I applaud your efforts and your interest in doing that, because I do think it's making a difference.
If you want to take more time to do that.
I mean.
Feel free, but Jen's getting a little warm.
I am.
And I do want to wrap up this presentation. Again, we look at those percentages, and I just think it's really important to keep a pulse on, you know, what those, what enrollment looks like within those subgroups that we're evaluating and monitoring, and in those cohorts. And we do see a shifting demographic, right? And we do see longitudinal underperformance for our two largest growing cohorts, which are students that are identified with a disability, and students who are considered socio-economically disadvantaged. So, we see that trend there. So it does warrant, and it is a call to action for us to really get intentional about the teaching and learning, and the details of teaching and learning, particularly for students that fall into those groups. Because if we don't do that, we're never going to see those gaps change. So in terms of what's next, we'll continue to develop those personalized reading plans for all K-3 students who are in a category of the twenty-fifth percentile. I shared an update on our completion of that, even in year one. Continue to prepare for full implementation of our new Standards-Aligned K-6 E L A resource. Focused efforts at the secondary site to prepare students for the upcoming state assessment. So, Meg, this gets at a little bit of what you were talking about. It is a shift in how we approach those assessments. And if it is categorized as just sort of this thing we have to get through, versus this opportunity to really demonstrate what you know, and build up some anticipation and some excitement, it does change the levels of performance. It does change how kids engage, and it does change how motivated they are to do well. And we'll continue to analyze those course options to ensure we're preparing students successfully. So those are, that is the continued and ongoing work.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Just as a comments bag on the math, especially as a parent who's monitored my kids, and been the one that's, the parent who's been very involved with their math learning all the way through, and now one's graduating, one's about to. One of, a couple of things I have seen along the way, and just how we saw the trend in phonics being shown to have substantial improvements in the reading elsewhere, and now Wisconsin's jumping on that. There's other trends elsewhere that are doing, because I, and I'm watching my kids, after third or fourth grade, once they passed a certain test for different facts, whether it was multiplication tables, or division, or whatever, that kind of went bye-bye, and they didn't really do much after that. But the trouble is, when you apply stuff, you need to be able to recall that stuff, especially when you're doing algebra, and you're factoring stuff out, and we're not seeing them doing that stuff in the younger ages after fourth grade, really. Maybe they are, and they, they've implemented that, but I haven't seen that. And, you know, I think, I think that's a, I think they sometimes get too addicted to using a calculator on that stuff, and then they don't automatically recall that stuff. It, to the, the points, gee, and Meg were sort of making about, yeah, you can't, parents, you can do this, but part of the problem with the way we do the Common Core style now, that, you know, math unfortunately is taught five different ways sometimes. And instead of, you know, it's important for a kid to know one way to do it, so they can recall that and create those pathways in their brain. And when we're teaching them four different ways to do long division or long multiplication, they sometimes get okay at all of them, but don't get good at any of them. And I think that's a problem with the system, in that where those kids are not learning it a way that they can then recall down the road when they actually need to apply it. And then the other thing I'm seeing at the high school level is the lack of, I saw a lot more homework being assigned in fifth and sixth grade than I see at the high school level. I see review packets come home that are very extensive, but overall, day-to-day work, I'd not see in coming home. And then in fact, I talked to Jeff about this last week, I think it's a problem that they don't grade any homework. They, you know, so then the kids aren't incentivized to actually do the homework, and so they don't. And then they don't get good at it, and then a lot of the formatives are only two or three questions, that's just a tiny snapshot. And so, I guess I, I see some significant areas where they, maybe they could do a pilot program, where one of the teachers in Algebra II says, okay, I'm going to allow the homework to count for something, give them a grade that's equal to something, you know? And so, and, and to see, is that actually something that would be helpful or not? Because like.
That's a, that's a good point. That's something that we do hear from parents, myself included, is if I see missing assignments from my high schooler, and I say, these are missing assignments, and she says, well, they're not graded, I still make her do it, but to your point, she's not, she doesn't feel incentivized to do it. So that, that's something that I think we, I don't know, Jeff, if we can look at that and understand historically why we've made those decisions, and then what can we do to potentially create some motivation on that homework piece?
What's the weight? What's the weight?
To answer your, they go together. So historically, there was a period of time where it was all the way down to eighty-twenty. Eighty percent summative, twenty percent formative, homework falls into a formative category. Math has shifted that up a little bit. But that's where it came from. It was a, it was a directive at a, at a district level that came down, that, that happened right as I was getting ready to leave. So that's the current structure that, that teachers are operating under right now, is departments have established a, a base for that. And I believe that, that from eighty to seventy, they can work from, and then it ha, it can't get harder. The percentage at eighty, if that's at high school, junior high's at eighty or less, right? So they've had that ability to flex a little bit, but when it initially was implemented, it was eighty-twenty across the board. So that, that has been where you've seen some shifts in that homework practice, because the, the research that we were looking at, and if you look at Hattie's research, it will say, the effect size of homework is, is pretty darnable.
But we, we prescribe that for teachers, we don't, that's not the prerogative of the teacher to decide what's worth what, because their courses are different.
It has to be across the, the department.
That's, that's new, I mean, I've been out of it for a while, but I don't remember that ever.
I mean, a year or two.
Well, I wouldn't, I wouldn't, wouldn't assign homework unless it was graded, because why would you do it? I, the kid would say, I got a million other things to do.
As a teacher, eighty-twenty came in, went right as I was leaving, and we were at seventy-thirty, and I graded homework.
Are we prescribing that right now for teachers, that they have to adhere to, to that?
They have to be at one of those two.
Really?
As a, yeah. And that's been for quite some time.
Would seem counterproductive to me.
Which follows best practice and research, actually. It's not unusual for districts to do that.
Well, it's not best practice for that thirty-seven point nine percent, or twenty-three point nine percent. But I want to say one other thing about our trip to Mid-State. You know, it's a revelation to me, every time we take a field trip to, to Mid-State, to Martin Machining, to Point Precision, the amount of English and math you have got to know to work in those places. And I talked to one of the people that were going around with us when Ryan was talking, and I asked him, you know, what he, what would you tell a ninth grader at SPASH to do if you want to come here and learn? He said, take everything. It wasn't real helpful, but, but the, we have, there's no place in curriculum now for math and English that, that's not going to lead to secondary education beyond high school.
We have math for the trades, don't we? We have math for the trades, don't we?
Well, that's, that's, that's a great course. That's, that's more than just, just, hey, you're not going to college, take this. That, there's kids in there that I'm sure are going to go on. And, so, but I knew we had an English course where we said, mostly kids go to college, take this one, and other ones don't take this one. It's like, there's no place for that. They got to, they got to read, they got to write, they got to report things verbally. That's why we have speech courses, and they have to do math. And I wish there was a way to get those unmotivated students and parents in front of those people to say, you want your kid to make eighty thousand dollars when they're twenty years old and they graduate from here? Come here, do this, and now you'll be motivated. But I don't know how you do that, I.
I know Mr. Gustavsky's doing a great job. I was at the Y A with, with my son, and it was awesome. They had youth apprentices around the entire outside area, talking through it with all of our different, all, all of our students could come through and learn from it, and then Mr. Gustavsky did a presentation. And SPASH has pathways in every different area to connect it to different fields and opportunities that, they do, they do a really, really good job with that. And, you know, when we look, and you guys talked about our, our, our data, and I don't usually get to steal Chris's thunder, so I'm going to take this one. But like, when we look at our enrollment data for, for math and E L A next year at SPASH, the conversations we have are working. We have a lot of kids taking the classes, you know they need, major increases in students taking classes, to the point where we had, we had to add F T E for math in E L A that are in that area, because we have more classes being offered, more kids taking those higher level classes, which is awesome. And I think, gee, it speaks to what you said, take everything. They kind of are right now, which is good.
Those kids who are getting the Ds and the Fs, I wonder, because like, are we snagging them and getting them over there, or are we just getting the kids who are interested?
And, and I'll push, I'll push back, and I know I've, I had a conversation with Cory about this. I've had a couple over the last couple of years, and I know we're going to be talking about the, kind of the whole, let's take a look at the programs, and let's take a look at where we maybe can cut some stuff, and where we maybe need to add some stuff. And I, I'll admit, I was not aware that Mr. Gustavsky, Mr. Gustavsky is not full-time. We do not have a full-time youth apprentice.
Correct.
Instructor, we do not have a focus on that. And we have fifty students right now, and that's, that's a really big load. And if we truly want to try to grow that program, and we want to provide opportunities for students, we need the dedication of staff for that. I mean, and, and he did, he wasn't pushing for his job, but he told me that, you know, a number of the districts around us that are hitting a hundred-plus kids, they have that dedicated staff. And to me, what we need is someone at SPASH, that that's their full-time job, to support these kids in youth apprentice, support kids getting, taking tech ed classes. I know we've been increasing the number, but we've built a beautiful facility there that has just incredible opportunities for kids. But if we're not staffing it, we're, we're, we're not going to be able to provide that education to the kids.
Good point, Meg. But we will bring another updated data presentation before the board in spring. Yeah, well, or, at the retreat is when we did it last year. So we'll find a time and make sure that you see the end-of-the-year data at another time.
All right, thank you. Moving on to agenda item, I just got to get back here, sorry.
Eleven A.
Eleven A, we have. We have CISA V contract for twenty-five, twenty-six, and we have Jenny McMahon, our Director of Student Services, to present that to us.
Everyone, good evening, good to see all of you. In your board packet, you have a member that speaks for our annual discussion on our contract for CISA V. Every year, we talk about what services we need to have within that contract, the needs of the needs and the staff needs. Within the quote, there are general services, and on the other side, there are specialized services that are set to sort for types of services of CISA contract with districts. Within the general operating services.
Thank you.
We're recommending continuing our district membership fee for CISA V. That's an important item for purchase. It allows for professional development at a significantly lower cost compared to if you were not a CISA V member. Or many times, they're even free, because you've purchased that membership fee. Really exciting always to be able to send folks, and just have to have them drive down the back. We're also recommending continuing our school improvement series on curriculum instruction. So, specialists at CISA V can work with teams, or school buildings, or a combination of those, to be looking at their curriculum and their instruction, whether that's looking at data, whether that's looking at actual materials. Sometimes it might be looking at schedules, or different systems that can support increased school improvement and student outcomes. On the other side of our CISA V contract that's been proposed, are specialized services, and those are broken down by the specialty area that we would contract with. An educational audiologist is a central part of our school team for students who are deaf or hard of hearing, but we certainly don't have the need for that to be a full-time position. So it's best done as a contracted service through CISA V. We have longstanding work with one educational audiologist, and we're going to work along that. Mr. Jim Gilmore is retiring, retiring this year, and he's been our Teacher of the Blind, Visually Repaired, as well as our Orientation and Mobility Specialist and Instructor of Rail. So at this time, I would recommend with a decrease in caseload of students in that area, although that can always, that would be best for the district to contract with those students who need that, rather than looking to hire somebody on staff and wonder what they have a caseload of staff with. So that is broken down at CISA. They, they have different people. Jim is someone who's Jacob Alltrade, who does all those things, that's not typical. So typically, you break that down by different specialists, so contracted services for O and M, and then for Teacher of the Blind and Visually Repaired. The last items which are projected on there would be student enrollment at highly specialized or alternative education programs, off-site, at. Off-site of specialized site taught by teachers who work with students with those needs. The schools that we typically would work with would be Wisconsin Rapids on the Alpaca sites. If students have that high level of need and right now projecting an enrollment into the Alpaca program for sure. Of course, that always changes, students are coming and going, IEPs are changing, needs are changing. But that's the best estimate according to studies of the CISA five contract.
Okay, if there are no questions, we're looking for a motion to approve the twenty-five, twenty-six CISA five contract for services as presented. Motion by Alex, second by Ted, questions, comments? If none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, opposed, say nay. Motion carries. Thank you, Jenny. All right, last but cer- well, certainly not least, uh, we have our fourteen A, our general. Uh, under general, we have our budget evaluation process and Chris promised some riveting data.
He did promise.
Don't, you, you oversold, you better not have delivered.
There are some interesting things that I think are just preliminary data from there. You know, this is a tough spot for this presentation to come in every quarter because it's right at the end, we're almost at the finish line. For as much of, as much time as this process has taken and takes on an ongoing basis, um, it is still a really fun part of my job and I think it's revealing a lot of really valuable and important information as we make decisions about programming and how that helps us identify some efficiencies within our process. So, um, we're continuing to analyze those fifteen programs that we've identified as being in need of, um, further analysis. I shared that list and I have that on the next slide listed. The example that I shared last month when we were together was the review that we're doing right now of athletic programming. Um, that group has been coming together and meeting consistently. We'll continue to do that. We're looking at some things like transportation costs, um, rising costs of officials, rising costs of event workers um, to make determinations about why those costs are increasing so dramatically. Um, I do wanna just highlight here, one thing that has taken a significant amount of time in the last month um, and probably two or three months, if I'm honest, for both Jeff and myself, is just the staffing process that's done separately at the secondary and at the elementary level. There are opportunities for efficiencies within our budget within those. We are scheduled tomorrow to meet as a full cabinet to evaluate the twenty-two positions that we currently have frozen. And we've seen that number tick up over the last couple of months as we process resignations and retirements. So we hope to be able to report back to the board next month, um, what final decisions have been made on those frozen positions and what efficiencies we were able to gather as part of the staffing process. Um, at this point in time, we're predicting some, um, and we're excited to be able to report that, but we'll have exact numbers or more exact numbers next time. Um, looking at those fifteen programs, those were what we identified as in need of further analysis. Again, some of those are not all because we're looking at potentially reducing. Some of them are also because we're looking at a need increase that exists in ELL as well as potentially, um, when we look at programming to support at-risk students. This is not necessarily final data out of the Hanover research project that we're currently doing. But I'm looking at core sequencing for both math and ELA. But I've been able to pull out some preliminary findings based on what they've shared with me up to this point. So they completed, as I shared, six years of data, a review of six years of data. Identify which pathways students are taking. And Hanover has helped us identify that we fall into either one of three pathways. Students are either taking a college prep pathway, which includes taking geometry at grade nine, algebra two at grade ten, pre-calculus at eleven and AP Calc or AP Stats at twelfth grade. An advanced track really has three options, all beginning with geometry at grade nine, moving on to algebra two or potentially AP Stats as early as grade ten. Um, moving on to pre-calc, algebra three is an option in our district, which is a bit unique. When we look at neighboring or regional tiers, algebra three is not a typical offering, so that sets us apart just a bit. And it created some challenges in terms of categorizing those pathways, but we do have a number of students that take that as an option. And we consider all three of those what we would call the advanced pathway. The standard pathway is algebra at grade nine, geometry at grade ten, algebra two at grade eleven. And then grade twelve, what we see quite frankly is a number of students not taking any now because they've completed their math credit requirement. So probably no surprise here, but allows us to just wrap our mind around how Hanover is looking at this six years of data and saying, where are the shortcomings that might help you make more informed decisions?
Before you go on, can you go back to that slide?
Sure.
Did they give you any idea of what number, what percentage of students are following each track?
So students who followed, and these are just some interesting statistics that I wanna share with you because I think it does give us a lot of information as we evaluate these programs more closely. Students who followed the advanced or the college prep pathways were much more likely to finish high school with an A GPA or an A, a GPA of A despite being exposed to more difficult coursework. Um, among the advanced pathway, ninety-one percent of those students finished with an A GPA. I think that's impressive and I think that's a big celebration for our system. Whereas just sixty-one percent of students in the standard pathway achieved an A or achieved that metric. So we see a stark contrast between how kids perform. Now, you might expect that, right? Because it's a lower level of rigor embedded in that standard pathway. I do think this is interesting. Ninety-six percent of students in the college prep pathway achieved a final GPA of A as well. So that's encouraging to see and I think that's also a celebration of our system. Here's some, there's work to be done, highlights. Economically disadvantaged students were much more likely to have to retake ma- a math course. Among economically disadvantaged students, forty-four percent, that's almost half of students who took algebra one in grade nine had to repeat it in grade ten. So this goes back to some of what we've talked about, right? And what we've identified is systemic areas for improvement. This is not a moment in time, this is six years of data. So there is something that needs to be more closely examined and we do need to put different supports in place to interrupt this pattern. Among economically disadvantaged students who took algebra in grade, algebra one in grade ten, forty-two percent had to repeat algebra one over again in grade eleven. That's really high.
So they took it in ninth grade, had repeated in tenth, and then?
But if they took it in grade ten.
Oh, okay.
Then it's, then they have forty-two percent of them had to repeat in grade eleven. They didn't take it in grade.
Okay, okay.
Um, and this is compared to twenty-three and thirty-one percent among students who are not economically disadvantaged. So significantly higher for those students.
Still on a par, but it's still one in three. That's still a really high number.
It's really high. And when you think about this demographic, right? It is our fastest growing demographic in the district. So if they are underperforming to this degree and historically, this warrants our attention, right? This warrants us focusing on it more closely. Um, key findings continued in math. Students who took geometry in grade nine were less likely to repeat in grade ten. That's a celebration. Students who took alg in grade, algebra one in grade, then, students who took algebra one in grade nine. Among all students, twenty-six percent of those who enrolled in grade nine had to repeat a course in grade ten. And among those who took geometry in grade nine, just one percent had to repeat it in grade eleven.
But that geometry was the college level and the advanced level, correct? So those were the ones that were already.
Yeah, so no real surprise there.
Okay.
But still a celebration, yeah. Um, I think this is interesting and the bottom part of this bullet is what I really wanna focus on because it's, it goes back to what I mentioned earlier in terms of interrupting the pattern. So just under fifty percent of students who were enrolled in geometry in grade nine, um, that's starting above grade level, took an AP course during their high school enrollment. So they had the ability to, but they're not doing it, right? So what are we telling them or not telling them that's preventing them from taking an AP class when they have the ability to be able to do it? Forty percent of students who started in grade nine in geometry took pre-calc in grade eleven, while twenty-eight percent of algebra three instead. So I think this speaks to the conversations we're having around program review. Are all of these options better, right? I indicated that grade, geomet- or algebra three is unique, um, it's not always offered. So are, are there benefits in becoming more prescriptive in those pathways and saying, we're going to eliminate some of the options because when you're prepared to go here, you're going here, right? Rather than eliminating, and we do that by eliminating some of those options. So this is good information for us to be able to chew on. Of students who started high school in geometry, fifty-seven percent took an advanced track, while only thirty-two percent took a college prep track. So that's pretty low. However, here's the celebration. Trends in student enrollment have changed over the past three cohorts. In twenty nineteen, twenty-one point five percent of all students took the advanced track, while only seven percent took the college prep track. So those are low. And the percent of students taking either of those tracks has gone down in twenty-twenty-one. So nine percent took the advanced track, only ten percent of the college prep track. So those are significantly lower. That's a concerning trend to see going down. But here's where we see a shift. And in our enrollment for twenty-five, twenty-six, what we see is, second bullet there, in math, we have a lot more students enrolled for next year. One thousand two hundred and forty-seven last year, up to one thousand four hundred and twenty-three this year at Spash. Courses that grew significantly include algebra two. We went from three hundred and thirty-four students enrolling last year to four hundred and nineteen enrolling this year. In pre-calculus, eighty-six all the way up to a hundred and twenty-nine. In AP Stats, fifty-five all the way up to a hundred and twenty-five. Those are huge increases. Those are huge increases. So changing the narrative around what you're capable of doing and what we believe you should try are absolutely changing what kids are willing to take on and the level of rigor that they're willing to expose themselves to. So this interruption in what we saw in those last two years on the previous slide is, makes me feel really good about the conversations we're having and the work that we're doing. I wanna highlight here because this is also a result of some work that we recently did here at the board level. We made some revisions to our junior course sequence in the area of ELA at a recent board meeting. And here's what we're seeing as a result of those changes. Um, for twenty-five, twenty-six, American literature enrollment increased from ninety-five students all the way up to two hundred and fifty-seven. Global lit increased from twenty-eight up to one seventeen. Composition and research, one twenty-six up to two thirty-one. Foundations of writing, one thirty to three sixteen. And two other significant successes were DE speech, no surprise there, but AP language from a hundred and ten to one forty-two. So those are really encouraging enrollment changes and trend changes um, that I think are coming as a result of this program review and departments are now more aware, right? Like, we can do this differently and we can encourage kids differently than we have in the past. Um, I wanna highlight here the position review and I mentioned those twenty-two current frozen positions will again take time tomorrow morning as a full cabinet team to review those. But we've reviewed a total of four hundred and seven, three hundred and seventy-three of those is others still categorized as eliminated. So we'll be able to report a decrease in that number of frozen positions and hopefully an increase in some of those eliminated. Um, and others will be categorized, of course, as follows. So that report will come in April. Um, just highlighting again how those referendum year two dollars will be spent or how we have those earmarked. We talked a little bit earlier about the ten-year capital improvement budget and the revisions to that. That's captured in the third item there, safety, security, approximately one point one million. And that does capture those three PA systems and the buildings that will be completed work done, or completed work this year. So that accounts for approximately five point two million. Um, and here are just outlined short-term and long-term goals. Again, at this moment in time, for the last month and in the upcoming weeks, we'll continue to look at those efficiencies as part of the federal staffing process.
Was it as riveting as he said it was going to be?
Maybe it's only riveting for.
Jenny had a question or comment?
Just, just, uh, maybe a clarification. Um, of course, I was very riveting.
Thank you.
Probably most riveting. Yeah, well, I do that a lot as a married man.
I'm gonna tell her to watch it at eight forty-three.
Oh, silence is golden. So it seems as if a lot of our celebrating is on students who are highly motivated, college-bound, probably more affluent than our, um, low-income scholars. And the students, once again, we're not as successful with are the students who are not highly motivated. Um, socioeconomic background, certainly challenged. And who are going to need a certain amount of math skills in order to succeed in our ever-diverse in terms of econ- economy. So, you know, you already know that and I think it's good to find, find rationales to celebrate. That's, that's healthy and yet there's a glaring part there that isn't diminished by that. I know you will.
And the, right, the performance of socio-economically disadvantaged students certainly is a concern of mine. I do, however, do not have data on the increase in, or the interruption in some of those enrollment patterns that we see for this upcoming year. I don't know how many of those students that are enrolled in those college or advanced pathway courses are socio-economically disadvantaged. So that's a question I have and that's the next layer to kind of dig into. So I think right now the answer is we don't know, but we hope that with those significant increases, we're seeing at least some of those students.
And I, and I do seriously appreciate the fact that you have been transparent. You've shown the data even when it's ugly. And I know that you are committed and I know our teachers are committed, administration's committed to turning it around. And we have seen glimpses of that happening and I, I just hope that we proceed in that, in that direction. And that we aren't sitting here fifteen years now and, and a lot of us are maybe elsewhere and another group of educators and school boards say, no, we need to do something like this because, um, you know, it's been a long-term issue.
And I think it would be helpful for me, and I think it was the question G asked, to know how many of our students are tracking into college and in the advanced and in the standard. Because I know the, the, clearly the numbers at forty percent are alarming with respect to socio-economically disadvantaged, but there were thirty-plus percent who are not socio-economically disadvantaged, who are on that track, who are also really struggling. So, so it's the reality of, you know, I mean, it's, it's, it's how, it's how do you again continue? And I know that's, it's your goal to continue to encourage. So I think it's real important, I'd like to know how, how many are in those tracks so we get a sense of that, that group in that track that just is not doing well.
Yeah, and I, you know, I can, I can, I can generalize without knowing the exact numbers and say, you know, the number, the percentage of kids in the advanced pathway is lowest, right? The percentage of students in the standard pathway is highest, right? And the percentage of kids that are in that kind of college pathway are kind of those, it's a, it's a middle of the road. And I can certainly get those exact percentages.
That would be good to see, yeah.
And so going back to Jeff's presentation with the math courses, seven through ten, when we're looking at that forty percent in pre-algebra, but then after pre-algebra, they're taking algebra one when they get to high school, correct? But then you said in your presentation that the people that are taking algebra one again is forty percent, correct?
Right, like if they take it in grade nine and then take it again, then taking it again in grade.
That was forty percent?
Forty-two percent.
Okay. I'm confused how that works when this says fifteen point three percent are receiving a D or an F, when forty percent have to retake it. Does that, does that make sense? I'm, I'm, the math isn't mathing and maybe my brain isn't working, but the math isn't mathing. If it's only fifteen point three percent have D or an F currently, but if forty percent are retaking it?
So I think what you have to realize about those percentages that I shared, right?
Is it six years?
Average of six years. So there were years where it was much higher than forty-two percent. And I think what we saw in Jeff's presentation is an indication that though nobody's excited about the percentage of Ds and Fs, it is going down. Right? Because at one point in time, that percentage of D and Fs had to have been as high as fifty, sixty percent. If the average is forty-two over six years.
Well, if we have pre-algebra at thirty-seven point six. Algebra one next year might be.
Right. All right, anything else for Chris?
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you so much, Chris. All right, uh, let's go to fourteen B. We have our future meetings, dates and times. We have our regular board meeting on April fourteenth, our organizational board meeting on April twenty-eighth. We were looking to start that meeting at five thirty PM. That's the April twenty-eighth organizational board meeting.
Any objections to starting that at five thirty? Okay, so, oh, you have an objection?
I have to see.
Okay.
Sorry, I'm looking at my calendar.
That's a maybe.
Probably yes, but.
It's still a Monday.
Yeah.
Monday.
Um, yes.
It works.
All right, so we will have that meeting on April twenty-eighth at five thirty PM. And then we have our regular board meeting on May twelfth. Moving on to agenda item fifteen A, enter into closed session. Um, this is closed session nineteen point eighty-five, parent one, parent C. Considering employment promotion, compensation or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility. And nineteen point eighty-five, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating. And nineteen point eighty five, parent one, parent E, deliberating or negotiating the purchasing of public properties, the investing of public funds, or conducting other specified public business whenever competitive or bargaining reasons required a closed session. This is specifically consideration of an employment consideration and contract for Kennedy Principal and Child Care Director, specifically consideration.